I'd like to call to order the November 15, 2006 meeting of the Goodyear Planning and Zoning Commission and ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all members are present. Mr. Bay is absent. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on November 9, 2006. Does everybody have a chance to print those out? Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the November 9 special meeting.
So we prepare to approve November 9 minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Mr. Gelsner. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tonight, we have several cases with great interest, and yes, we do. If you would please complete a speaker card so that when the case comes up that you want to speak on, I know to call on you. If you do not want to fill out a speaker card but still would like to speak, you'll have that opportunity, so you will not be foreclosed on speaking just because you didn't fill out a speaker card, but you'll be invited to participate. If you are speaking, I'd like to have you come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record, your name and address. And because of the large crowd, we urge you to limit your comments to about three minutes. I'm not going to use a clock, but I want to be judicious about the use of our time. If you have a point that you wish to make, that is one that's already been stated, I don't have any problem with you coming up and going on the record and indicating that you associate your remarks with a previous speaker and move on to the next speaker. That way, we'll get out of here at a reasonable hour. These are some complex cases that we had before us tonight. They have significant impact on the city. We want to hear what you have to say, but at the same time, we'd like to have you be as concise as possible, so we appreciate your assistance in that regard. Is there anyone that needs to disclose ex parte communications? Hearing none, we'll move on to our first case, which is case 06-200-00010, Camelback 303 rezone, a public hearing to consider a request to rezone 134 acres, generally located near the southwest corner of Camelback Road and Cotton Lane from the agricultural AG district to the light industrial I-1 and general commercial C-2 districts with a planned area development overlay. The applicant is Via West CCNI LLC. Make the public hearing and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and the public. I'll begin by giving you some background information regarding this site and those that surround it. The subject property in this rezon case involves about 134 acres here, generally at the southwest corner of Cotton Lane and Camelback Road at the extreme north part of the city. The site is currently zoned urban agriculture, which is really a large lot residential zoning designation. However, the general plan designates it as within the Loop land use compatibility area, and that generally allows uses such as light commercial and commercial. To the north, the parcels there are unincorporated. They're within the county's jurisdiction. It's currently zoned rural 43, which is basically one unit to the acre. Although it's not within any particular city or town, it is within the city of Glendale's general planning area. To the east is Perimeter West 1, a project by Suncor, which is also a mixed-use commercial slash light industrial development similar to the one that's being proposed here. To the south, currently is vacant. That is also within the Loop land use compatibility zone as well. And finally, to the west, is the proposed single-family residential development known as Talavertia Estates, and that is currently through the planning process right now. Now, I'll refer to, I believe this is Exhibit 9, the conceptual land use plan that the applicant has provided. Pardon the glare here, but what the applicant is proposing with this is, like I said earlier, a mixed use primarily consisting of general commercial and light industrial uses as well. We have about 16, a little over 16 acres that would be set aside for community commercial or C-2 uses. That will primarily be at the very north side of this parcel, just south of Camelback Road. And again, that will be 16.1 acres, and actually, a collector roadway will separate these two, separate this community commercial area into two parcels. The vast majority of the subject property is, would be proposed light industrial uses, and that would be about a little bit over 110 acres. And incidentally, again, here, just as with the commercial developments, there would be two parcels that would be separated by an east-west collector road. With that, I can go ahead and discuss some of the issues that were discussed throughout this review process. As I mentioned, to the east is a proposed mixed-use development similar to what's being proposed here. To the north is largely vacant, as well as to the south. Directly to the west is the proposed Talavertia Estates, which is about, if I remember correctly, about 290 acres of single-family residential uses. And so, in order to mitigate some of the concerns with regard to traffic that usually is associated with larger industrial buildings, the applicant has provided an exhibit, and this would be Exhibit 16 in your PAD packets. And these basically illustrate some of the buffering methods that would be used along the western boundary where many of the industrial buildings would potentially be located. And so, if you look closely, the applicant has delineated several different scenarios, and this is intended to be used with the key map here to the right, but there are several different possible scenarios here where a Talavertia Estate, this would be the property line, and Talavertia Estates, in some cases, there would be a 60-foot swale, and in such a case, the applicant would be providing a 30-foot landscape setback, including larger box trees, and a 50-foot rideaway would also be located within this area in Talavertia Estates. Section B provides another possible scenario where there would be a 30-foot access drive along with a 30-foot landscape buffer and a 94-foot swale basin, in this case, on the Talavertia side of this property line. And finally, another possible scenario would be locating a bay window primarily on the west side of the proposed industrial buildings. There would be a 90-foot minimum truck queuing area, again, with a 30-foot landscape buffer and a 94-foot basin or swale. So that is one of the mitigation methods that the applicant has proposed in the PAD packet. In addition to that, one of the 20 stipulations, and particularly stipulation 20, what staff is also recommending with this rezon approval is that the applicant obtain a use permit for any building that is more than, that is 250,000 square feet or greater, or in cases where the, and this applies along the western boundary, this would apply along the western boundary that is shared with Talavertia Estates to the west. So in addition to that 250,000 square foot threshold, in cases where there are any dock level bay doors that are predominantly on the west side, we would also require the applicant to obtain a use permit as well for any future developments, particularly at the site plan stage. So staff is recommending approval contingent on those 20 stipulations, and Ed Bull is here representing the client via West, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions for staff? Ms. Osborne.
Farhad, unless I did not see it in here, stipulation 15 starts on a good part of it, but I don't see about light trespass or our light ordinance regarding this. That could either be added to stipulation 15 or altogether a new stipulation regarding light trespass.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Osborne. That is currently in the books. It's already mandated, but however...
Well, some of these other stipulations we put in, I just like to have...
Right, yeah, and in order to be, yeah, just for the sake of being emphatic, we could include that with one of the stipulations or stipulation, another stipulation altogether.
Other questions for staff?
I have...
Mr. Gelsner.
Farhad, could you pull out Exhibit 7, which has the APZ map and the project on it? Is there any restriction, you know, the southeast corner of this project basically winds up going through the accident potential zones number two. Is there any restriction on building there, and would we, and if there is, would we have some, you know, site plan review so that that's basically a landscape area, or, you know, where do we stand on that?
Absolutely. Loop Air Force Base has been heavily involved with this review process, and they will continue to be as other submissions come in, but the, I believe the state statutes does, the state statute does regulate the types of developments that could occur within any of the accident potential zones.
So while we could put a warehouse or mixed use or whatever outside of the APZ, but in the sound corridor, which this is all in, in that small southeast corner, there's a higher level of restriction of development to the point of it may not even be a building or something of that nature. Is that what I'm understanding?
If my recollection serves me right, there would be certain types of buildings allowed there, certain types of uses, I should say.
Storage.
Right.
Okay.
And again, those are listed in the statutes, but...
Just so we're aware of that, okay. Another question on Exhibit 9, you have an easement basically running along that APZ. Is that the aviation easement, or what are we...
I think you're referring to the...
Yeah, that's it.
This is an APS easement.
Okay, thank you, that answered that question. And then, last but not least, if you go back to the exhibit on the landscape detail that you had up, 16. When we approved Talavertia Estates, and I'm trying to remember if they're approved or they're in the middle, or they still haven't gotten a final site plan yet. I guess what my question is, you know, I look at the swale and I look at what's going on here, and we have, in this case, we have jurisdiction from the property line east. We do not have jurisdiction to the west, and we're showing, you know, we're showing, you know, landscape, berm, a swale, trees, et cetera. You know, has that developer, you know, seen this, and have they checked off on that? And are they going to be doing this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, I think the applicant would better be able to discuss that, but I do believe that there was some involvement with the folks through the west, developers for Talavertia Estates, and they're certainly aware of the fact that they are adjacent to the AZPA and that potentially this property, as you can see here, is well suited for industrial.
I'm not disagreeing, I just, you know, when the applicant comes up and makes his presentation, I guess I would ask him to address that question for us, or for me. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions on Exhibit 10, the corner that's Cotton Lane Development, LLP. What's the current zoning on that?
Are you talking about the out parcel?
Yes.
The current zoning on that is agriculture-urban, or again, a large lot, residential.
Have we seen any activity on the part of the ownership to move ahead with any rezoning?
Frankly, a while back, perhaps over a year ago in some months, there was a submittal, I believe it was a rezon submittal, that has basically been collecting dust for a while, but there was a proposal for a rezon proposing a commercial type of development, particularly retail.
There's nothing current going on?
No, nothing's being reviewed.
I heard you refer to the tree and landscaping requirement, particularly as it addresses the setback on the western border of the project. You referred in terms of box sizes on trees. I think we had a conversation several meetings ago regarding the fact that the boxes haven't shrunk, the trees have, and the need to go to a caliper requirement. Where are we with that?
Farhad, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can try, Mr. Chairman. We are currently taking another look at our landscape design, or I should say, landscape development standards, and we want to take a nice hard look at it, and those would be one of the areas that we would address, our caliper sizes and how far they're off center and so forth.
And what, when might we see something?
I would imagine within the next few months, four or five months.
Okay.
Chairman, we're compiling a list of zoning amendments and prioritizing them, and our planning managers are going to work on that and sign those out to different planners over the next few months, which will be bringing you various zoning amendments, and that'll be one of them, looking at a comprehensive review of our landscape for you.
Thank you.
I think that's all the questions I've had. Any further questions for staff? Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Via West. We do appreciate staff's recommendation for approval. We accept staff's recommended 20 stipulations, including we have no problem adding some wording to stipulation 15 indicating that we also comply with the city's lighting ordinance. I don't know how much of a detailed presentation you want for me this evening, because I think Farhad emphasized something that's very important, and that we're absolutely consistent with the general plan. And there's a couple, three questions here that I think you want me to address, please. I can run back through some exhibits and so on if you want to. I don't want to hiblade it, but you have a full agenda without hearing a speech from me unless you really need one. Having said...
We appreciate your...
My brevity?
Yeah.
At least my attempt at brevity. We'll see if you let me off the hook here. In any event, as I indicated, with respect to one of the questions, the lighting ordinance were fine, adding a stick with respect to that. With respect to APZ 2, as was discussed between Commissioner Gelsner and Farhad, the statutes address different noise contours. There's actually a table like this in the statute that talks about different noise contours, APZ 1, APZ 2 as well, and it has yes in some columns and no in some columns. So yes, there's land uses that are allowed in the APZ 2. It's more limited in the APZ 2 than in the 65 contour. We touch on that some, and I believe it's page 5 of our project booklet, but bottom line, there's this statutory protection in place. In addition to that, there's a stipulation that indicates that further submittals to the city, which would include site plan review, get looked at not only by city staff, but city staff balances them to Loop for their review as well. So I think there's some belt and suspenders involved in that. Thirdly, with respect to the exhibit that you were talking with Farhad about, which I think is Exhibit 16, which shows the landscaping concepts and so on along the western property Let me say a couple, three things with respect to this particular illustration. First of all, the various sections that are shown here, that are depicted over here as well, those sections were taken from the preliminary plat on the residential property to the west, and our planner happens to be the same people who did the planning to the west, so I'm as confident as I can be that the measurements that are shown with respect to the swale width at those various locations is accurate per that preliminary plat. Secondly, what we're trying to emphasize here is a common denominator throughout all three of these examples is an eight-foot CMU wall or combination wall and berm that occurs on our west property line. The other common denominator is a 30-foot landscaping setback that occurs immediately east of that eight-foot wall or on our side of the wall. And then, the remaining distance varies with what it is that's going on with respect to that building that's adjacent to that area. You take that and belt and suspenders it with stipulation 20, and I think you have a package that helps assure compatibility with not only our need to be compatible with Loop and the noise contours and industrial to our east and south and so on and so forth, but also compatibility with future residential to the west. Having said that, unless I missed a question, I think that that covers...
I have another question for you, Mr. Gelsner.
Okay.
Where are you on four-sided architecture on these buildings? We've had, you know, requests for a little bit of relief on something, and in reading through the whole proposal, I'm not, you know, I'm assuming that you're not having, you know, your buildings are going to be following the design guidelines of the city, and you're not asking for relief on that issue?
That's correct. The reason that, we could have simply zoned, you are correct, we could have simply zoned it I-1 and C-2, straight hard zoning. We put the PAD overlay on it just for purposes of dealing with some parking and other related issues. We recognize that the city's design guidelines and so on come to play, and when buildings are coming through the process, the staff will scrub the buildings against those design guidelines.
Thank you. I'm fine, thank you very much.
Other questions for Mr. Bull?
On that same exhibit, you have a 60-foot swale, a 94-foot basin, and a 94-foot basin. How is that going to graduate between A and B, the 60 to 94?
All I can tell you is that A is just a section that was drawn through here off of their preliminary plat. B is a section drawn through here off their preliminary plat, and C was a section drawn through here off their preliminary plat. And I believe, and Kevin's still in the room somewhere, Kevin may want to elaborate on this, because he's a common denominator on both this development and the development to the west. This area that we're talking about here, that's on the residential side of this eight-foot wall, serves a function, as I understand it, for both conveyance of stormwater and then some open space areas as well. So I think you have a width that's required to convey the stormwater, and then there's places where it kind of bubbles out for an additional open space element.
Okay, so what it will do is it will graduate into, the 60 will graduate into the 94?
It undulates different distances along there, but importantly, part of what we're trying to do here is show that, to begin with, on the, to the west of us, the city and that developer decided a long time ago for a variety of reasons that there needed to be open space on the eastern edge of their property, which happens to be just west of our western edge. And I believe that the purposes of that open space along there was to convey stormwater, to provide an open space element for the future residential to our west, to provide some additional buffer between the 65 noise contour and their houses, and between future industrial uses on our property and their houses. So there's a multiplicity of things that are going on there. We could have taken the position fine, that buffering should be and is being provided on the residential side. We shouldn't have to worry about it. Through discussions with staff, we felt what made the most sense was to take what they've done and amplify it by these illustrative examples of what can and will happen on our side of the property lines. We're taking what they're already agreeing to do through their plat, and we're adding to it on our side of the line as well.
Okay. Back to that answer, sir. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Bull?
I had a really brilliant presentation and just fiery conclusion, but I think...
You can still go with lying.
I think I should shut up and sit down.
Save it for the next night, I imagine.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Okay, any last minute thoughts, questions, discussion? If that's the case, then I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, was it 06-200-00010, as written with the stipulations and the additional stipulation with regard to the lighting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. DeBrockert. Any further discussion on the motion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Bull? The next item on our agenda is a bit unusual. At our last regular meeting, we considered a special use permit for Cobblestone Auto Spa and Market at the corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road. The applicant has asked for a reconsideration. They are working with the staff to modify the site plan for that operation and the multiple use permits associated with it.
multiple use permits associated with it. In order to do that, we have to indicate tonight as a body that we are willing to reconsider it. Those, since we defeated the recommendation to authorize the, recommend the use permit to the city council, they would very much like to have our affirmation. Procedurally, a member of the commission that voted against recommending the use permits to the city council must be the initiator of a motion this evening to consider and place this item on our agenda for our next meeting.
December 13th.
December 15th. 13th, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I was one of the commissioners who voted against this proposal, and I would like to move that we reconsider the Cobblestone Auto Spa and Market use permit and place it on the December 13th agenda for commission action.
I have a motion to reconsider. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. DeBrocker. Before we get into the actual vote, I want to, just want to briefly say that I also voted against it. However, if they are very much seeking our affirmation, I have no objection to that, and will be voting in favor of the motion before us to reconsider that case. Is there anyone else that has a comment?
I've been in meetings with, as a commissioner, I've been privileged to go into some staff meetings with the applicant, and I believe that they are sincerely, have understood the concerns of the commission, and that their preliminary site plan, while not perfect, is moving along very smartly in the direction that we have indicated for them.
Any further comments?
All who question, all who's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion for reconsideration passes. This item will be on our agenda for December 13th. Okay. The next block of cases under new business and is a group of seven major general plan amendments, and Mr. Kraus is going to give us a brief overview and introduction on both process and the cases, and then we will move into the individual cases. We will not be making any decisions this evening. We would like very much to hear your viewpoints on the cases. The next, we have a public hearing scheduled for the 29th of November, which will be at the Starpoint Community Center in Estraya Mountain Ranch, at which meeting we will consider for a vote and a recommendation to the city council on each of the seven amendments. So, with that as administrative background, Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, members of the public, good evening. Just, as you indicated, a very brief overview for the benefit of the public. These are, they're seven major general plan amendments. We process minor general plan amendments throughout the year, but you can only consider major general plan amendments once a year. And the key thing here is that they must be considered in the same year that they're filed, so the city council must conduct a hearing and consider them, not necessarily approve them, in the same year they were filed. The seven that we have before you tonight have all been filed in 2006. As the chairman indicated, there are two public hearings are required by law. We had one additional public hearing we had last week at the Mobile Elementary School on the Sonoran Valley Amendment. The two public hearings must be held at different locations. This is the first of the two required public hearings. The second, as the chairman indicated, would be held in Estraya Mountain Ranch at Starpoint at 7:00 p.m. If you need directions to that facility, you can ask Joe or myself or someone of the staff members. As I indicated, the seven, of the seven general plan, of the seven general plan amendments we're considering, six were filed by private property owners. One is being sponsored by the city of Goodyear, and that is the last one on the agenda. It's this one, the Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment. Two of the seven general plan amendments are currently within our municipal planning boundary. I'm sorry. The five of the seven are in our municipal boundary. Two are not in our municipal planning boundary. One is located to the west of our municipal planning boundary. Our municipal planning boundary is this yellow dash line that goes around the, this map. I know it's hard to read the glare on this map. This is an area about 2,500 acres and being sponsored by McCray Holdings, who has approximately 500, 600 acres that they wish to develop. And this is private property that's surrounded by federal land. The other, this property is currently within the town of Buckeye's municipal planning boundary, and we're having current discussions with the town of Buckeye regarding that particular piece of property. It's being proposed within the city's municipal planning area because there's infrastructure that is existing or will be existing within Goodyear's municipal planning boundary, and the developer, McCray, wishes to take advantage of that since the property to the west is BLM, and Buckeye is unable to serve that property. The other property that's outside our municipal planning boundary is the Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment. We'll discuss that later. That's the one that we held an additional public hearing on last week in Mobile. Briefly on this map, commission asked for a map to put things in context a little bit. Hopefully, this is helpful. Just briefly, the colors represent, the green, the light green areas represent BLM or federal land. The blue, the light blue areas represent state lands. The areas within, that are brown here, I guess they're sort of a beige color, are representing holdings with Estraya Mountain Ranch. That would, the blue boundary represents Estraya Mountain Ranch, these boundaries. And then the, sort of the gray color represent other private land holdings within the area. The darker green to the right, to my right, I guess, of this map is the county's Estraya Mountain Regional Park. That's half in the Abindale municipal planning boundary, and the other half is in the city of Goodyear's municipal planning boundary. We have quite a, hopefully that helps put in context. So, we're looking at, as I indicated, five of the seven general plan amendments are within the city's current municipal planning boundaries, and we're looking at land use. And this evening's, the purpose in this evening's public hearings is to consider land use proposals and expansion of our municipal planning boundary. There, it is not, it should not be, it's not a public hearing for annexation. If annexation is proposed, there'll be separate public hearings for annexation. Just to clarify, we do have an annexation petition from the developer of Madera, the area that's outlined in red. There are existing residents in that area. The city has filed the blank annexation petition and map for that particular annexation, and a hearing would be held on that, I think, next month. I believe that's when that's scheduled. But notices would go out to private property owners before that hearing in accordance with state law. That is the only one that where annexation has actually been initiated. However, we do have annexation being planned in the Sonoran Valley area by Montage Holdings for their properties, who have assembled over 10,000 acres in that area. So, this is public hearings to talk about land use, not annexation, and staff will go over these seven general plan amendments. They'll do brief presentations on each one of them, and then we will open it up for public comment on each of these proposed amendments. So, that concludes my comments. Do you have any questions? If me, I'm available.
Questions?
No. Thank you very much, Harvey. Okay. The first case is Case 06-700-00005, Estraya Mountain Ranch, General Plan Amendment. This is a public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the city of Goodyear to amend the general plan's roadway functional classification plan to revise the arterial roadway network within and adjacent to Estraya Mountain Ranch to facilitate future zoning and development. The proposed amendment affects approximately 242 acres of proposed roadway alignments located between Ray Road and Patterson Road. Open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation. Mr. Tavasoli.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this particular general plan amendment, as submitted by Neeland Communities, developers for Estraya Mountain Ranch, does not address any of the current land uses. It does address the circulation component of the general plan. And the primary focus of this amendment is arguably the realignment of the Loop 303 freeway beginning south of Germaine Road. Here's the alignment for Germaine Road. And if you were to refer back to the current general plan amendment, the Loop, the 303 freeway currently proposes a straight shot south. And as you see here, the amendment that's being proposed is for a realignment of the Loop 303 extension down to Hunt Road at the south. That is the primary focus of this general plan amendment, the Loop 303 freeway. Incidental to that are a number of other realignments to the major arterials, and particularly Cotton Lane. Cotton Lane is, the proposed amendment is requesting that Cotton Lane kind of follow north-south delineation along with Estraya Parkway. And what's also being done here is a reclassification of some of the arterials. As you can see, the ones in yellow, particularly Riggs Road, Cotton Lane, and Estraya Parkway, which I already spoke about, those are, those would be reclassified as scenic arterials in this amendment. Should also mention that up at the northeast part of this map here, it's, you can see here, you have an Estraya Mountain Regional Park. The watershed, you know, that's kind of shown in this area gently slopes a little bit to the south, toward the southwest, and in so doing, you have a number of washes as represented by the very faint blue lines here. They also go towards kind of a southeasterly, southwestern flow. And with the realignment of some of the arterials, particularly the east-west arterials, they're being aligned to kind of minimize the wash crossings. And hence, you have some of these kind of taking a diagonal direction between southeast or the northeast and southwest. That, with that, I think I can conclude my presentation. I should mention, as Harvey mentioned, we're not recommending anything at this point. There is currently a transportation study that's in the works that would, may further validate the realignments that are being proposed here, and we would likely hold off until that transportation study is completed. Hold off on making a recommendation before either planning and zoning commission or city council.
Thank you, Farhad. Questions of staff? Mr. Gelsner?
I have a couple of questions. The first question is, we're basically moving the 303 alignment from, to the northeast, and we're moving it off the Newland Holdings and into, I'm not sure whose land it is, but, and I don't remember, but...
State land?
State land. Which is all well and good for Newland. I'm not sure what the state is, you know, what are their comments on it? That's my first question. My second question is, you alluded to a overall transportation study that we're doing, and I'm assuming that we're going to basically tie the, tie Newland's proposed roads in with the McCray roads, with the Lyons property roads and everything else, and we're going to see one big map like this of, this is the roads that we want to propose? Because basically, when we, when we redid the general plan in 2002, 2003, we sort of took Sun Emp's MP on their word, and they said, well, this is what we want, and we said, okay, it's so far out that we're going to say, yeah, you know, you guys have tentative ideas. Now, there's a lot more stakeholders involved, and my question is, are we, this transportation study that we're doing is tying everything together. Is that correct?
Yes, to you.
And we will, because when city council sees this, they're going to want to see a general roadway map. They're not going to want to see it a piecemeal.
Yeah, correct. So would we.
Good.
Yeah. So, yes to your second question. As regards to your first question, not too long ago, I was speaking with one of the members of Neeland Communities, and they mentioned that there is an ongoing dialogue going on between Neeland and the state land department as well. And I think where we left it, there was no opposition expressed, however, they would be very much like to be involved with the whole process.
I mean, you know, I hate, I hate for us to, you know, march down the way, and then all of a sudden, the state land department comes in and says, we're not going to participate in this because this is the first we're hearing of it. And I think we need to make sure that they're involved and they actually do show up and know what's going on.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
In this scenario, who is going to be responsible for acquiring those rights of way from the state land department?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we've reached that level of detail.
Are they going to have, procedurally, are they going to have to put that land up for bid?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. We've been meeting with state land. They're fully, they're fully aware of the Sonoran Valley proposal, and we're keeping them apprised of that and working on a pre-annexation agreement for state lands. They also own 10,000 acres of state land, which is all by all the blue in the map north of, in our current planning area, and they have much, a lot of interest in the city planning their state lands right now, or in the future, near your future. So, we're working on an agreement with the state land right now to plan those 10,000 acres for them. They have a lot of interest in where the 303 would go. Typically, they, it would just be preserving quarters for the 303. It wouldn't be, we're not in a position right now to acquire any rights of way, just quarter preservation right now.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff?
Thank you, Farhad. I have one speaker card. Jeff Bliley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Bliley, View Skillworth, 4800 North Scottsdale Road. Can I just have some handouts I'd just like to hand out if I could?
Sure.
Can I just have some handouts I'd just like to hand out if I could?
Sure.
You want this back yet? I'll go ahead with him. I'm here tonight representing William Line Homes with the Rainbow, I think we're calling it Australia Point project now. We were here for a general plan amendment last year. First off, we don't oppose realigning the 303 in general. We just have some individual concerns with some of the proposed alignments. First off, we'd like to reiterate staff's concern that we're aware of the RBF study that's going on right now to study the alignment of the 303 and some other corridors. And we certainly would hope that there'd be no action taken, at least until that's complete. And we're aware that, I think November 29th meeting is an action item meeting, and I don't think the RBF study will be done by then. So, we'd certainly like to see that study done before any action was taken or any recommendations were made. We're also concerned with the scope of the study. I believe the scope only went as high north as Pecos, and I heard Farhad mention that the shift in the alignment only went as high as Germaine. It actually goes a little farther north of Germaine, and there's some interesting topography north of Pecos, specifically within our property. Right in this vicinity here, there's a ridge line. And in the current alignment of the 303 in the general plan, it goes, basically goes over the highest point of that ridge line. We had CMX do some work, which is on the second sheet, and they kind of mapped the topography and showed where the lowest point would be through that line, through that ridge line. And that's depicted by the blue 303, which we think, which we think is, you know, the most, the most economical route, and probably the route that ADAT's going to eventually select when they, when they come through in this direction. And this, this area really dictates how the 303 gets realigned south of Pecos or south of Germaine, because you're going to have to, there's certain geometries you have to keep with when you're, when you're building a freeway. So, we think that the scope of the study should be expanded a bit. We need to make sure we're taking into consideration this alignment when we're, when we're realigning it. And we want to make sure that we're not just arbitrarily, you know, shifting it to avoid certain properties and maybe having impacts on other properties. And one of the concerns when we brought this up with staff was, well, you know, they didn't like the, our original proposal was, it kind of curves a bit when it comes down this way to get over here. What we were trying to do was show how we could stay as, as close to the proposed realignment, which had this kind of arbitrary swing up here, probably to avoid this property here. So, what we did is, we went back in the last sheet, we'll show you that, where we kind of created the green line. It shows you how, if you go on the most economical route through our property, you kind of come out of the south, and then you, you kind of make a nice soft curve over, and you might have to, you know, shift it a bit here to get rid of that arbitrary curve. But we're just hoping that in your, in your consideration of this, you'll, you'll consider all of these issues and fairness and everything as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Blyley.
Yeah, I do. Have you communicated this, these plans and these drawings to the consultant that's doing the transportation study? And have you talked with staff about expanding the scope of that study to incorporate these drawings into that study?
We did. We met with staff last week, and we asked them that, we thought it would be advantageous to expand the scope of the study, and I'm not sure what staff, how they responded to that. I don't know if we've met with RBF particularly. I think we have had some conversations with RBF, got, got them our information. So, we've been trying to make them aware of these issues. So, I don't know if the scope of the study's been expanded, to answer your question. But we, our suggestion was that it, that it do be expanded.
Can I, don't go away. Can I ask staff where we stand on this? I mean, the question-
What our recommendation is?
What? No, the question is, have we, are we considering expanding the scope of the study, this transportation study, to go up as far as Ray Road, so that we take into account this, this little bit better, possibly better engineering alignment for the 303? And, and are we, you know, are we working on, are we working with this? And the, let me, you can answer that, and then I'll finish with the applicants.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah. Would you? My transportation consultant will address it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is David Sabres. I work for RBF Consulting, a engineering firm in Phoenix, Arizona. We are aware of this. We've had conversations with CMX, the engineer for it. Right now, the present concept for the 303 is a thousand-foot corridor. It's being planned, and we're just simply not at the level of detail that the CMX drawings is at. So, we can look at minor adjustments to that, that thousand-foot corridor that fits in there, but we're just, you know, simply not at that stage right now.
Okay. Can I, I worked on the general plan, you know, redo in 2002, 2003. And when this gray line that's here was commonly referred to as the red banana, because no one knew where it was going four years ago, and we needed to put something on the map. And obviously, we put it in probably the scenically worst spot for this property owner. So, I, as a member of the planning commission, and as a former member of the GPAC, I really strongly recommend that you, you know, go back and look at the, the general plan, the reasoning behind that whole area, and understand that that was a general suggestion, and that was not a line in the sand that was drawn, because we knew exactly where this 303 should go.
Correct.
Okay? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Blyley?
I did have one, just a quick follow-up.
Sure.
If I could, if you could put maybe the map back up. Our other concern with that point was that this gray line represents a thousand-foot corridor, and the most appropriate location as depicted in CMX is probably 2,000 feet outside of that line. So, even under the plan to protect a thousand-foot corridor, the most likely preferred route would be well outside of that. So, you wouldn't be protecting the corridor that the road would ultimately probably be built in with the plan as it is now.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Mr. Bull.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the applicants on this GPA. I didn't turn in a, I didn't turn in a card. I apologize for that.
You're welcome.
Anyway, if I may, Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne, representing Newland and Sun MP, because as you know, Newland is in the process of buying Australia Mountain Ranch through annual takedowns from Sun MP. So, right now, Newland owns part of Australia Mountain Ranch, and Sun MP still owns part of Australia Mountain Ranch.
So, you're double dipping a head?
Just, just here for fun. As, as you know from the staff report and from Farhad's comments, this is a circulation general plan amendment. I think some of the general plan amendments you have on your agenda tonight probably deal with circulation and land use. This is a circulation-only general plan amendment. We are not proposing changes in land uses here tonight, as Newland continues to work on their visioning for Australia Mountain Ranch, which they've been working on with staff. And I think your, your commission to some extent, and the council to some extent, has been briefed on those types of things. Dealing with circulation is one of the first steps. Dealing with then corresponding land uses will be another step in the processes. But this is circulation, and circulation only. In part, we were asked to get involved in this scenario concerning the 303, because back when the general plan was updated in 2003, as Farhad indicated, the 303 went straight south and just kind of dead-ended into the Sonoran National Monument. That was probably a placeholder at that point. And a year or so ago, there was considerable dialogue between a couple of general plan amendment applicants and city staff about whether or not the 303 would go on this section mile alignment, or go halfway between, or that section alignment, or where it would go. In part, parcel through those processes, Newland was asked to step in and see if perhaps there was another way to skin the cat. And a way to skin the cat would be to have the 303 move off to the southeast, rather than going straight south into the Sonoran National Monument. So, in that spirit, Newland stepped in and began working with staff and others, including principal-to-principal meetings with among principals of Newland and the principals of the two general plan amendments that were further to the west, that were kind of squabbling among themselves a year ago. Having said that, and having recognized that, that RBF and staff would be making a detailed presentation, I think, in a couple of weeks or three weeks at your next commission hearing, what I would like to do would be to give an overview of what it is that we filed and talk about that a little bit, and then a couple of modifications that we've preliminarily been asked to make in what we filed. I say that by way of background, because I expect that part of what you'll be looking for RBF and staff and us to do, as, as you've indicated earlier, is try to get our arms around collectively how it is that these different alignments on these different general plan amendments either line up or get budged a little bit one way or the other, so that they do line up, and we understand those processes. Be that as it may, as we're talking about this general plan amendment, and as, I think, I'm not positive, but I think that this application booklet was included in your materials that provides some of the background and discussion, there are really a couple, couple objectives of the, the general plan amendment as we filed. One was to add some additional north-south street capacity. That was one objective. Another objective was to, in terms of macro objectives, I'd say that. And then, secondly, was to provide more regional connectivity. In doing that, in filing this general plan amendment, we could file it only on land that's owned by either Sun MP or Newland. We recognize that as we have some of these arrows pointed across state land and so on, that that's other people's land, that our application could be filed only within Australia Mountain Ranch, and staff and others then are processing or file their only, own general plan amendments that connect up here and there. Having said that, with respect to these, these objectives, our focus, as Farhad indicated, was really focusing on the 303 alignment, and then focusing on certain arterials. As we were talking about the 303, and as Farhad indicated, as you know, it was really coming straight south into the Sonoran National Monument. That's something that, that needed to change. It was just a matter of where does it change to? In dealing with that, Newland retained Dim Jim and Mike Hayes, and Dim Jim is here tonight if you have particular transportation-related questions for him, but to study various alignments and topo maps and environmental issues and so on and so forth. And one of the things that we felt made good sense was to bring the 303 across, picking it up more or less here, hoping and understanding, at least principal-to-principal, that that helped resolve some of the dispute that was going on between a couple of general plan amendments over here to our west. But bringing it across, keeping it on the northeast side of Waterman Wash, as it goes through Australia Mountain Ranch, rather than crossing back and forth across the wash, which is not only hugely expensive, but very challenging environmentally and hydrologically and so on, but keeping it on, on the northeast side of the wash. And then providing the opportunity for it to come on down here, and then from this location, recognizing that the city, in conjunction with others, needed to make some decisions as to whether it veers off more to the southeast, or more to the south, or split in a difference between the two, or wherever you all decide that it ought to go. But what we were trying to show is, look, it needs to be picked up here, and instead of going straight south, let's bring it on across and, and get it to a point where it can go further, either over toward I-8, or I-10, or both, or wherever it's ultimately decided that it should go. Not knowing at that time that there was going to be a very large application coming down the pike to our, to our south and southeast, which plays right into where this alignment ought to go as it leaves Australia Mountain Ranch. In any event, in dealing with the 303 alignment, that's where Dim Jim and preliminarily working with city staff, we felt that it made sense to, to deal with the 303 alignment, recognizing that that 303 alignment will provide some of the regional connectivity that needs to be dealt with in this part of the city, in this part of the valley. In part and parcel with that, as a part of the outreach to other landowners in the area, that outreach, in addition to what Harvey was talking about as far as the city's contact with the state land department, that outreach also included Newland having at least two meetings with the state land commissioner, going over various maps and so on and so forth. So, he's very aware. I was not personally in those meetings, but I've talked with Newland people, one of which was here, who was there. So, the land commissioner's very much aware, seemed to be fine with what we're talking about here, recognized that it improved state land values and so on and so forth. So, bringing it over into some of this blue area is something that's not at all a secret to the state land department, has very much been on the table through both staff and through us. In addition to that, as I indicated, there were principal-to-principal discussions between Newland principals and people involved in these two larger general plan amendments to our west, back as far into March. And maybe there's some nits and nats and details that need to be worked out, but at least we perceived, and maybe Jeff will correct me, but we perceived that principal-to-principal, this was all headed in the right direction as far as where to pick up the 303 and, and move it through Australia Mountain Ranch from. In addition to dealing with the 303, as, as Farhad mentioned, and as I mentioned, we also needed to address simultaneously some arterials, both some north-south arterials that Farhad mentioned, as far as Australia Parkway and Cotton Lane, providing, you know, some additional arterial north-south connections through this area. And then also dealing with some generally east-west arterials. And again, part of the challenge that we were dealing with, with some east-west arterials, is the washes don't run straight east-west. So, what the, what the general plan had historically done, like is shown by these solid lines, is it recognized that, and had some of these arterials going off in a northeast or the southwest of the direction, so that they could cross these washes at a 90-degree angle, as opposed to a really, really, really long bridge, or series of box culverts going at an angle across them and so on. So, that's part of what was being dealt with on some of the, the arterials as well. And it's something that was discussed with staff, not only in the usual pre-application kinds of meetings, but has since been, you know, discussed with staff, as far as staff reviewing this general plan amendment application. And it's something that I know that RBF is looking at in the context of their bigger-picture study as well. Again, it's how do these various things line up? The third component of what was, was discussed or touched on in this booklet has to do with making sure that we're identifying as a part of the vision for this area, and keeping in mind future opportunities for something other than everybody driving in their own car to wherever they're going to, be it buses or some other form of transit opportunities. That's being touched on here. It's something that's being dealt with through some of the visioning that's occurring in the area, because we think that that, too, is an important part of, of transportation planning. As, as I indicated, when we jumped into this back early in the spring, when you need to file these applications, we were really at that time dealing with, with a couple of older applications to our west and southwest. Since then, there's been considerable activity to our south and southeast. As a result of some of that, there's been additional discussions with staff and RBF about some possible modifications that they've asked Newland and Sun MP to consider in the context of this map, as far as the alignment of the 303 and so on. And I, and I don't say this by any stretch of trying to steal any of RBF's thunder that they come back with in two or three weeks, or whenever they're coming back, because we recognize that that study needs to be out on top of the table, and out in front of you as well. But one of the things that RBF asked Newland to take a look at was, as you'll see on this version that we filed, the 303 was coming down here and came to the Litchfield alignment, and then came straight south on the Litchfield alignment. For some of the same reasons I believe that staff was articulating a year ago over in this area, staff or RBF asked Newland and Sun MP to consider the possibility of moving this 303 over a half a mile, so you'd preserve both of those mile arterial corridors, plus have the freeway bifurcate those two mile arterial corridors. And that's something that's acceptable to Newland and to Sun MP. And it's shown on this revised version of what we filed, where here again, the 303 is shown really bifurcating Litchfield and Bullards, so that we're honoring that request, I guess is what I could try to say. Secondly, on this particular version that we filed, and it wasn't anything that we thought of candidly, we had not shown the possibility- thought of candidly, we had not shown the possibility of Litchfield going north. RBF or staff asked Newland to consider showing that as a possible arterial alignment going to the north, we said fine. So, on this version of the map, we're showing, again, we can only show it where we can show it and put arrows on the other ends because it affects others' properties, but it's showing an anticipation of a Litchfield road that can go north and further south. And then thirdly, as you can see in this scenario, Riggs Road was shown coming across to the south side of Waterman and then coming up at an angle in this location. What we were asked to do is consider the possibility of bringing Riggs Road straight across and then dealing with this angled street up in here as well, and that too is something that was fine with Newland and Sun MP. And again, I'm not here to represent or try to box staff or RBF into a corner to say that these are three and the only three suggestions or revisions that may come out of this study, but those are three that Newland and Sun MP were made aware of, that they could get their arms around and look back and make some decisions on, and we agreed with the recommendations on those three items. Having said that, as you know, I guess depending upon what the study says or doesn't say, we may be back here saying we think it's a great study, we agree with every page of it, or maybe we'll say it's a great study, we agree with all but two pages of it or wherever we're at, but I think the details of that is something that we need to further understand through further discussions with RBF and staff. And unless you have questions tonight, we request the opportunity to discuss this general plan amendment and its details in more detail with you when you're back here for your second hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Curley?
I have a question for staff. We're going to get revised maps, right, for the next public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to point out that we have planned a, scheduled a meeting with each of the stakeholders within this area, and staff and RBF, and we will go over the proposed transportation network and get their feedback and input before the 29th hearing. So, that's on the 21st. We've scheduled that meeting with the applicants and go over some recommendations with them so they can give us feedback as to issues they might have with the proposal. We get everybody in the same room at the same time talking. It'd be nice.
Thank you. My cue to sit down?
Yeah.
For the moment. Mike Curley?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the commissioner for your record. My name is Mike Curley. My address is 3101 North Central. I hadn't planned on talking to you, but I had to react at least to a couple of comments that were made, and I want to elaborate on some of the comments that Ed made, which I'm agreeing with, and react to a couple of comments which Mr. Blyly made, which I'm in disagreement with, and it relates to the 303 alignment. And I hadn't planned on speaking tonight because my intent was that I talked to Mr. Blyly's partner, Mr. Gilbert, and asked him last week if we could schedule a meeting to try to address some of this 303 alignment. And just sort of calling a spade a spade, let me tell you what is involved in this 303 alignment issue. The 303 alignment in the area of the exhibit that was just handed to you, basically, that 303 alignment in that area of Pecos and Jermaine falls on two different properties, William Lyon's home's property and my client's property. Last year, as Ed has indicated, there was sort of...
Wait, who is your client? Are you representing?
I'm representing the Thousand Acres, which is the subject of, I think, two more of your, two more general plan amendments on the second case.
Not Rainbow Valley, right?
Triple Sec.
Triple Sec, is this triple sec yours?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so, what had happened was, as Ed has alluded to, last year, there were two sort of different ideas on what ought to happen with the 303 alignment. I'm going to get into that in a moment when I talk about the triple sec general plan amendment, but being perfectly frank, what happened was, is in this one neck that was shown on the exhibit, which Mr. Blyly just handed to you, some of that alignment falls on my client's property, some falls on William Lyon Holmes' property, and to be perfectly frank, neither one of the property owners was wild about having the alignment disproportionately set on their property. And so, as Ed has indicated, about nine months ago, a meeting was arranged between the principals, William Lyon Holmes, my client, Ed's client, and Dim Jim, the engineer, to try to see whether or not we could come up with some sort of alignment that would equitably burden both properties, recognizing that the alignment was still going to have to be sanctioned by the city and that we weren't going to decide on the exact alignment, it was going to have to be engineered, it was going to have to be reviewed by the city, reviewed by the city's traffic engineer and consultant. But the idea was, try to settle our differences in private rather than have to do in public. And so, a meeting took place, we thought, and I think Ed's client thought that an agreement had been reached, in fact, Dim Jim had drawn up an alignment that we thought reflected that agreement. I personally wrote a confirmation letter to William Lyon Holmes with that alignment on there. Again, we were belaboring under the impression, and that alignment became the basis of the triple sec general plan amendment, and it wasn't until about a week ago that we discovered that that alignment apparently, although we thought we had an agreement, we had, we've not. Again, my intention here is not to air a dirty laundry, it's just to reiterate that I think that it would be in everyone's best interest if the parties would get together, as I've suggested to Mr. Gilbert, to try to sit down, try to iron this out, so we don't have general plans that are coming before you with sort of dueling alignments. And so, again, I would just reiterate that, reiterate that offer that amazing Mr. Gilbert to try to settle what we already thought had been settled.
Sounds like the 21st, you're going to have a forum to do that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this general plan amendment? Yes, sir.
My name's Charles Baker, with Arnold Baker Farms. We presently are not planning anything at this time. Our property rests between Rainbow Valley Road on the west side, Jermaine Road on the north, Flint Creek Road on the south. We attended the meetings with these people in the Newland communities offices. We had an understanding with them at the time that as the 303 veered across in a southeasterly direction across the state section, that the actual roadway would stay to the northeast of our 320-acre tract of land that's there. I don't have a map, didn't have any idea that we would have any reason to talk, but as I see some of these maps, it looks like that it is scheduled to come across a corner of the property we have. We had a verbal agreement with William Lyons, Triple Sec, the Newland communities, as to how that would go the southeasterly direction and just barely miss the northeast corner of this property we own. So, we would like to have more information on that, and I thought we had a good verbal agreement.
Harvey, can we extend an invitation to this gentleman to attend that meeting on the 21st? Thank you for...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Any further issues, discussion comments? Or is the public hearing, which will resume at our meeting on the 29th? Excuse me while I get organized here. Our next case is case 06-700-00002, South Goodyear General Plan Amendment, public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the city of Goodyear to facilitate future zoning and development of approximately 867 acres of land containing three separate parcel groupings, which are as follows: 78 acres at the northeast corner of Chandler Heights Road and Sandia Road, 475 acres east of Rainbow Valley Road between Chandler Heights Road and Acateo Road, and 158 acres at the northwest corner of 155th Avenue and Riggs Road. The applicant is Michael Curley of Early Curl &amp; Lagarde on behalf of Ron McCray. Staff report, please.
As you said, this is a request for a major amendment to the Goodyear general plan for three of the five McCray Holding properties. There are three parcel groupings, totally 867 acres. I highlighted the three McCray Holdings properties that are part of this case right here. All three are within the city of Goodyear, city limits.
Can you put that back up?
Oh, I'm sorry. The first parcel grouping, which is parcel grouping B, is located at the northeast corner of Chandler Heights Road and Sandia Road and is 78 acres currently designated as rural residential. The second parcel grouping, which is parcel grouping D, is 554 acres located at the northeast corner of Rainbow Valley Road and Chandler Heights Road. The Waterman Wash cuts through the northeast corner of this parcel grouping. The third parcel grouping is 235 acres located at the northwest corner of 155th Avenue and Riggs Road, and the Waterman Wash cuts through the southwest corner of this parcel grouping. All three areas are currently designated as rural residential and low-density residential. That's a copy of the current general plan. This amendment proposes designating all 78 acres in the first parcel grouping from low-density residential to low-moderate density residential. In the second parcel grouping, this proposes changing 554 acres from rural residential and low-density residential to 285 acres of low-density residential, 110 acres to low-medium density residential, 68 acres to medium-high density residential, 44 acres to community commercial, and 47 acres are located in floodplain or wash area and are not designated to land use. Of the 235 acres located in parcel grouping three, 52 acres will remain low-density residential, 126 acres will change to low-medium density residential, 20 acres to medium-high density residential, 20 acres to community commercial, and 17 acres are located in floodplain or wash and are not assigned to land use designation. Overall, the current general plan proposes approximately 1,200 units with an estimated population of 3,200 for the total 867 acres. With the proposed land use changes, this will increase those units to 3,600 with an estimated population of 9,600. That's an increase in population of about 6,500 people. This proposal was originally submitted to the city, and this is the proposal that was presented at the citizen review meeting on July 18th, and that was distributed during the 60-day review period. However, since that, and we didn't receive any negative feedback on this proposal. However, since that time, an alternate proposal has been submitted to the city, and major change is just working with some of the circulation, changing the Riggs Road to possibly even follow Chandler Heights Road, and then changing the land use designations to fit that new The first parcel grouping of 78 acres isn't affected at all by this new submittal, and all the acreages of land use will stay the same, it's just rearranging those to be more appropriate with the road alignments. And this is probably easier to see, this is the second parcel grouping, and the commercial is moved down here to follow Chandler Heights Road on the south portion of that parcel grouping. And on the third parcel grouping, this is where Riggs Road is brought through to cross the Waterman Wash at a more appropriate angle, and then the community commercial and high-density residential's been altered to fit that area. When the traffic study is finalized, that's when the land use designations and areas will be finalized as well, but at that time, we don't know what the exact adjustments will be. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Katie. Questions of the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the commissioner for your record. My name is Mike Curley. My address is 3101 North Central. I'm going to apologize in advance for where I'm walking that out. I think I'm the applicant in the next three cases, so I'm lighted out, I'm going to try to be very brief. These three properties that we're talking about are all within a half-mile to a mile of one another. They're one, depending upon which property you're talking about, they're one to about three miles south of Rainbow Ranch, which you just approved in your general plan last year, and all three of them are immediately west of the Astrea Mountain Ranch. I'm going to be very brief on this, because I know you have a number of items on your requests, but let me just deal, the three parcels that we're dealing with, again, just to sort of give you a context, this is the three. Astrea is right over here, and here's Rainbow Ranch. Just starting off with 1A, that's to change the designation of 78 acres from low-density to medium, to low-medium density. Just basically touching upon our rationale, there is employment and commercial immediately to our south in the general plan, also on Chandler Heights Road, so hence the slight bump in density. On 1B, which is slightly to the east, that's 475 acres, and going through the rationale here, on the existing, the existing plan, existing general plan right here, this is the parcel right here that's outlined in 1B, immediately across the street to the west is a parcel, fairly large parcel of property that's designated medium-high density. We've reacted by putting some community commercial or some small commercial and some mid-density at this location, and conversely, down at this corner here, we've tried to react to the employment which exists on the general plan, which is where my pen is right now. So, that's the rationale that we employ on most particular parcels. And then finally, on 1C, which is 158 acres at 155th and Riggs, we're changing that essentially to a low-density, low-to-medium density from low-density. You'll notice that there is employment existing on both sides of the parcel, and hence the request to have some commercial and some mid-density right adjacent to the employment. And then the balance of the site is essentially going to be low-to-medium density, and then established, as indicated this area here, we estimated about 60 acres would remain as low-density as are adjacent to the wash. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Questions of Mr. Curley?
Are we going to get one of these maps?
I'd be glad to get you one. They're hot off the presses.
Let me ask, have you, if I remember correctly, some of your property is very close to the Newland-Sun MP properties, is that correct, Mr. Curley? Like the 1C and 1B?
Yes, you can see that they're, the properties across the wash.
I guess my question is really both to you and I'll ask Mr. Bull to possibly respond. I think the fact that you're looking at the overall general land use in this area and revising your plan based on, one, the transportation, the new transportation model that's going in there, and, two, the assumption that Newland isn't going to change again what we have there is, at least, you know, works in my favor for, you know, saying, okay, you know, we're thinking the big picture here, and we're not just thinking our individual, you know, piece of property. So, you know, I'll ask if Mr. Bull wants to make comment on that. If that's great, if not, we'll leave it at that.
One other question. Sir, do you have a phasing to this at all?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Osborne, to be perfectly honest, I mean, this is really the first step in what we think is going to be a fairly protracted process in terms of really, number one, establishing what are the general land uses, what are the densities, so that the next step of really trying to solve the infrastructure. The infrastructure is obviously the thousand-pound gorilla down here, and we've been working with staff for about two years on this property as well as the next application, which I'm going to be talking to you about, particularly sewer. The two main infrastructure issues have been sewer and circulation. I think staff has done a real admirable job in terms of trying to tackle the circulation issue. As Harvey has indicated, to my knowledge, the RBF has sat down with every one of the property owners that are involved in this area. I know that we've sat down with them on each one of the properties that we're discussing here, so that we don't have a disjointed circulation system. here, so that we don't have a disjointed circulation system, and we, and that was, you heard staff talk about the alternative at the tail end of the presentation, that alternative land use was actually proposed in light of what some of these alternative circulation systems that are being studied right now. Or I think that once that circulation system is finalized, perhaps some of these land uses will be tweaked somewhat. But the, in terms of phasing, I mean, I'd be disingenuous if I told you it's going to be next month. It's going to be ways down the road.
Well, I figured that. I was thinking of your A, B, and C, if there was an area that you were focusing on.
I think it's going to probably be, I have an exhibit that I'll show in a moment that will show you what is tentatively planned for some of the sewer treatment plans. I think it's going to be proximity to where the future treatment plants are, those properties which are as close as that are going to be the next in line, I would suspect.
Other questions of Mr. Curley? Mr. Bull, did you want to comment now, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Ed Bull representing Newland. I think, if I'm keeping up correctly, that McCray 1B is here, and McCray 1C is here.
When should you use?
Okay. I think that's correct. Any event. Phil Luna from Newland is here this evening, and I don't know how much communication has occurred yet between McCray people and the Newland people, but it certainly can, and I think everybody has open ears to talk with each other and compare maps and so on and so forth. So either Phil Luna nor I have any comments tonight, other than let's get together, maybe compare maps.
Let's, let me make the suggestion. I mean, we've gone through, we've, you know, we've changed these land use designations, you know, many times already, and we can keep changing them until everybody finally agrees. But if the principles actually got together and looked at, you know, okay, we think this node, if this align, if the transportation or the infrastructure actually stays where it's being finally planned, once we have that in place, then you can actually, you know, work on your land use plan to better, you know, to maximize your potential. And, you know, our job here is not to stand in your way. Our job is for you to do really good development work. And all I'm saying to you now is I'm encouraging you to get with them so that there is some synergistic effect, you know, because we're starting, because four years ago, we didn't, you know, we just took what was being handed to us as a general plan. Here we are, now we're dissecting it because it's starting to mean something, because there's actually roads that may be built there in the next three, two to three years.
I think there ought to, I agree with you completely. There ought to be principle to principle and planner to planner discussions. As you know, on the general plan, we were processing it circulation only, as I indicated, to get that in place, and then we'll continue to fine tune land uses. It's not like internally, Newland isn't thinking about land uses adjacent to the circulation pattern. It just, we opted to proceed with a general plan amendment that focused only on circulation, so we knew where the roads were going to go.
I'm not disagreeing, Ed. I'm commending you for that, because I think, once we know where the roads are going to go, then we can really logically plan where the commercial is going to go, where the houses are going to go, where the buffer areas. And we know we're trying to keep the washes in the natural areas, you know, on an open, you know, as open space and usable open space.
I think Mike's clients and my clients would be happy to meet and compare maps and go for it.
Don't let us, don't let planning commission negotiate it for you, because we're not fair.
Very good. May I sit down again?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else that? Well, you can charge mileage. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this case? Any last comments from the commission? Closed public hearing on case 0002, and we will continue our discussions and hearing on the 29th of November.
Mr. Chairman, while we have a break, I had on the table out, and there was car keys. Someone may be missing some car keys. If someone drives a Honda, possibly a Toyota at times, they shop at Fry's, Bash's, and Albertson's. I'm not sure whose keys these are, but we have some keys if you don't have your keys.
You've got additional scope to your job. Lost and found department. And I would be remiss if I didn't ask all of you with electronic communication devices to either put them on stun or turn them off. That's okay, Joe. Okay, our next case is case 05-700-00001, Rainbow Valley General Plan Amendment. A public hearing to consider a request for major amendment to the general plan of the City of Goodyear to facilitate future zoning and development of approximately 999 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of Rainbow Valley Road, which is 179th Avenue alignment, and Willis Road in the Rainbow Valley area. The applicant is Michael Curley, Earl Curley in Laguard, on behalf of Triple Ciate LLC. Mr. Tavasoli.
Thanks again, Mr. Chairman Horsman, members of the commission. I'll begin with some background information. As you mentioned, the subject area in this case is just under 1,000 acres. It is bound by, if I could just get my alignment straight, roughly by Willis Road here to the north, Queen Creek Road to the south, and I believe Rainbow Valley Road to the east, and the Perryville Road to the west. In terms of ownership, directly to the south and the southwest, the properties are predominantly owned by the state, as well as up by the northeast corner of the site. And a little bit beyond that is Newland's property, or Australian Mountain Ranch. I should mention at this point here, to the west, one of the general plan amendments that was on the agenda last year was approved, and hence, an area known as Rainbow Ranch was included within the municipal planning area. However, not all of it has been incorporated yet. Referring to an exhibit in the Rainbow Valley General Plan Amendment packet before you, these are the existing general plan designations for this area. And again, I should stress here, to the east, or excuse me, to the west, is William Lyons' property, or the Rainbow Ranch General Plan Amendment that was approved last year. Currently, the vast majority of these 1,000 acres consists of a rural residential designation, which is the lowest possible density for any residential designation according to the general plan. The, I should say, a bigger part, I take that back, the vast majority is low-density residential, and that consists of about 572 acres, pardon the factual error there. Rural residential consists of about 118, or, yeah, 118 acres or so. Low-medium density residential, currently there is none, no designations for low-medium density residential. To the north, you'll see a medium-high density residential, and that's at about 40 acres. Open space, which, the vast majority of which is along the Waterman Wash corridor, that consists of about 155 acres, and then about 114 acres for community commercial, predominantly located, as you can see here, to the southeast. In the following exhibit, you'll see the general plan amendment proposal being depicted graphically here. The rural residential designation, which previously was at about 119 acres, has been removed. Low-density residential would be the predominant residential designation at about 512 acres. Low-medium density residential at just under 200, or 197 acres. Medium-density residential at 81 acres, and open space at 154 acres, 155 acres, and community commercial at 55 acres. And so that totals up to about 992 acres for this area under consideration. If you look at the densities, previously, we, or currently, I should say, we're looking at a little over two units to the acre, 2.16 to be exact, for the residential density. With this general plan amendment, we would be looking at 3.17 dwelling units to the acre. So an increase of about one dwelling unit to the acre. Also being proposed with this amendment is a realignment to Jermaine Road. Currently, it's delineated as an east-west alignment. With this realignment, it would be hooking up to a proposed arterial to the west, which again, is the William Lyons piece. And with that, I'll conclude my comments. Again, as Mike mentioned, he's representing this general plan amendment as well, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before I take it over to him.
Questions for staff?
So Fahd, in essence, it looks as if from the table that we have here on the commercial sites and the residential, we are cutting the commercial acreage in half, almost, or pretty much? We're losing that and gaining more residences?
Yeah, approximately half of what it is currently.
Isn't that one of the issues in a general plan amendment that we don't take away from employment? Would that be considered somewhat as an employment?
Excellent point.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Curley.
Mr. Chairman, again, I'll sort of try to run through this fairly briefly. As Fahd said, this is the old general plan here, and in response to Ms. Osborne's question, the two primary changes that we're making, this is the old, this is the 303 realignment, and regardless of how we get through this realignment, basically, regardless of where it swings, where Mr. Bliley would like or what we'd like, it's somewhere in this depiction right here, which I'll show you in a second, is the alignment that you're going to be, that's going to be before you in a little bit. As a result, as a result of this realignment and the 303 not coming through, we shifted the commercial up to this area here, which I'll show you in a minute. One of the things, before I leave this map, is that when we started studying this property and we bought it, we were frankly, a little bit curious as to whether commercial would work at this location. The reason being is that you can see it's sort of in our location, where the 303 alignment of the existing general plan is, there really can't be an interchange at this location. It's not at, it's not at a major intersection, and yet you have an enormous amount of commercial here. And the other difficulty that we had is the Rainbow Valley Road intersecting with the wash. There was, there were some discussions early on as to whether or not there might be some realignment of this area, this intersection, because you basically are going to have an arterial-to-arterial intersection in the middle of a wash. And so for all those reasons, we were concerned and expressed some concerns about, to staff about whether or not this amount of commercial was really realistic, given the problems of having this intersection-to-intersection in a wash, and the problem that there really was not going to be an interchange here. So that was sort of some of the thinking. It's sort of an unusual situation that a developer is seeking to get less commercial, but we just felt that, under the existing general plan, it just didn't seem to make much sense to us. So as a result of the realignment, the basic changes that we've made is that the commercial that was down in this area over here, we shifted up to the north to reflect some commercial adjacency to that existing 303 alignment, and then we buffered it with some medium-density and lower-medium density designation in this area along the freeway and adjacent to the, adjacent to the commercial. The other thing that we've done is, I can run through these a little more slowly, I don't mean to be rushing through them, but we've added some commercial down here at the intersection. This is a regional commercial site and some higher density, and we reflected some transition on this parcel number four. It's somewhat of an isolated parcel next to the wash. And then number five, we're changing from rural residential to a low-density residential. But the primary, the primary changes have been the relocation, as a result of the relocation, the proposal to relocate the 303, trying to place the commercial and some moderate density that would be near that freeway. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions of Mr. Curley?
Hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bliley.
Thank you again. I don't really have anything to add, just reiterate my concerns regarding a general plan amendment that depicts a 303 alignment that hasn't been approved yet, and maybe the premature nature of that, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? That'll close the public hearing, and we will continue the public hearing to the 29th of November. The next case is case 06-700-00003, Perryville and Acateo, General Plan Amendment. Public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the City of Goodyear to facilitate future zoning and development of approximately 1,720 acres, generally located west of the Perryville Road alignment and south of the Acateo Road alignments in the Rainbow Valley area. The applicant is Earl Curley in Laguard, on behalf of McCray Holdings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'd like to first draw your attention to the vicinity map, which shows the location of the proposed 1,400-acre general plan amendment area. Subject area is highlighted in black on this exhibit, and is bounded by Acateo Road to the north, Pecos Road to the east, Riggs Road to the south, and 275 to the west. The entire general plan amendment area consists of mostly vacant property. And as you can see by looking at this exhibit, State Trust Land is located to the north. Located to the east are low-density residential and light industrial land uses. Located to the south is State Trust Land, Bureau of Land Management property, an area of rural residential land uses. And then, again, located to the west are rural residential land uses, and this section falls within the 207th and Pecos General Plan Amendment area. And I'll have a presentation after this that will talk about this area.
David, could you go back to the original, yeah, that map? Okay, there's the McCray Holdings that's outlined in brown, and then the, we're talking about what's outlined in black. No, that one, yeah, right there. Okay, McCray does not control everything that we're discussing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Chairman Horsman, I just want to briefly discuss proposal and reasons for this general plan amendment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. This next exhibit shows the current and proposed land uses within the general plan amendment area. The first request is to expand the City of Goodyear Municipal Planning Area boundary by approximately 1,400 acres, which is shown within this area here. The second request is to designate 760 areas as rural residential, 612 acres as low-density residential, 15 acres as community commercial, and 13 acres as medium-density residential. McCray Holdings, the applicant of this request, owns 640 acres of the proposed 1,400-acre amendment area, and McCray Holdings' property falls within this red highlighted area.
The rural residential stuff that you just showed us, it's not held by McCray. Does that property owner want to be, are they participating in this general land use amendment? And do they want to come into the city?
Chairman Horsman, Commissioner McDowell, there was a citizen review meeting held Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Gelsner, there was a citizen review meeting held for all these property owners that fall within this area. Everybody was notified, in fact, everybody within 500 feet of all of these properties were notified. And some concerns were addressed at that meeting, but mostly, I was not at the meeting, I was told that those concerns were addressed by city staff, and they were okay with being included within this area. Being included within this area.
Okay.
If there's, I'm sure we'll hear some comments tonight, though, if there's anybody in opposition.
What's the blue line right here? No, the one that's leading right between it.
This, ma'am, is a proposed minor arterial.
Thank you.
Sure. And this is the circulation plan. The Perryville and Acateo general plan amendment area, again, is proposed minor arterial, and the general plan area is proposed minor arterial that splits the property, is subject to change based on the idea of consulting the court. This concludes my presentation for the Perryville and Acateo general plan amendment, general plan amendments. The applicant, I believe, has a brief presentation.
Let's see if you, do we have any other questions from the commission before you... Thank you, David.
Fortunately, I think this is where the process slows down a little bit. Mike Curly, my address is 3101 North Central. Let me just give a little bit of background, because I want to address Mr. Gelsner's, or I think it's Mr. Gelsner's concern, and I think maybe the concern of several people in the audience. As the staff indicated, we own only 640 acres out of this 1,400 acres. We had originally applied for, we sat down with staff, we originally just were interested in our 640 acres and trying to ready that property like, like the other properties which we've discussed tonight. In our initial discussions with the staff, I think the staff felt that from a planning perspective, it made sense, since this area is not now within Goodyear's planning area, that it made sense to try to address this comprehensively. I don't mean to steal staff's thunder, I'll let staff explain the rationale, but I think from a planning perspective at least, it made some sense to try to encompass a greater area. We don't care, all that we're interested in is our 640 acres, and as I explained in the neighborhood meeting, we have no interest in affecting anybody else's property rights, we have no interest in, in affecting anybody else's property designations. We haven't touched the property designations on anybody else's properties but ours. We're basically applying the same sort of designation, which is a rural designation on their properties, the properties other than the 640 that we're, that we're dealing with. And again, as, as I think staff started out this meeting, we're not annexing the property, we're not suggesting that anybody, anybody's property be annexed, we're not zoning any property, anybody else's properties, all that we're interested in is our, our own 640 acres. But I think, again, from staff's perspective, when you look at the outline of this property, and again, what we're dealing with is right here, I believe that the, I'm prepared to stand corrected, but I think that everything, with the exception of this extant parcel here, is basically private holdings. This, I understand, is a state land piece. That, I think, has been deleted from the application. The original application was 1,700, I think we're actually dealing with 1,400, because the state land piece has been taken out, as I understand it. But again, all that we're dealing with is the 640 pieces, but I think, 640 acres, but again, I think staff's rationale was try to create a logical boundary of privately-owned properties, and hence, that's the reason why we're dealing with the 1,400, 1,400 acres subject to this, to this particular application. The designations are fairly straightforward. The 612 acres is the, is the low-density, 13, I think 13 is medium-high, and 15 C2, and then the C2 and the medium-high density designation were included in there just to have a mix of uses. This, in response to one lady's question about this roadway purely conceptual, we, I probably shouldn't even be on there from a general plan perspective, but I think the planner put it on there to show some proposed circulation. But obviously, if this general plan were approved at a later point in time, we came back for zoning and planning, we would deal with circulation issues at that time. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Curly? Yeah, just, just so I understand it, currently you are not inside the, you are inside our planning area, but not inside the incorporated city limits, is that correct?
No. Mr. Chairman, we are not within your planning area. This property is not within your planning area. Essentially, the, the application is seeking to do two things. One is to expand your planning area to include this 1,400 acres, and then secondarily, it would be to apply the land use designations that are, that are on this application.
Okay. Do we, I guess I have a question for staff, and... Other than Mr. Curly, 640 acres, have we heard from any of the landowners and the other 700-ish acres who are going to, you know, come into the city of Goodyear's planning area? You know, if they're in the audience, we'd like to hear from you, and if they're not, we need to talk to staff about it.
Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards, but if there's anyone that would like to speak on this case, now would be the time.
Mr. Chairman, we had a citizen meeting, and there were several residents that attended, but I don't know, I don't recall and don't remember where they, they actually live. I think they were either in this general plan amendment, or they may be in the one, the next one. So, we did have some county residents, I'm not sure they were in this area.
From a procedural point of view, Harvey, if they, if people, if landowners don't object and we just take them in, right? Is that pretty much the way this is going to happen? Or, I mean, I know we're not taking them in as an annexation, but we are taking them in as a, in a planning area.
Mr. Chairman, the, you know, it's important that we don't get annexation and general plan amendments confused. We affect no property rights, nothing changes. They still continue to live in the county, they're still under Maricopa County jurisdiction, they get their permits from Maricopa County, they pay taxes in the county. Nothing changes with their property if they're in the municipal planning boundary. What the municipal planning boundary allows us to do is for purposes of utility planning, for water and sewer, to take in consideration a larger area when we, when we size infrastructure, future infrastructure, and also for road planning purposes. And for the purpose, if the property will ever incorporate into a, into a city or a town, they would go into the city or town that it falls within this municipal planning boundary. So those are the two reasons why you have a municipal planning boundary. They're for planning purposes, utility planning purposes, circulation planning purposes, and for future incorporation, if there's going to be incorporation. It does not change anything else about the property status. So, that, that's it.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone that would like to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
You have to, sir, you have to go up and identify yourself.
And identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Farhad Musa, and I'm one of those owners that you've been talking about.
Can you speak into that microphone right there?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Musa, and I'm one of the owners of some of those, small owners and some properties in that area. My question really is, we show detailed maps, these maps do not exist anywhere, and hence it's difficult for me sitting there to place some of these properties and how they relate to where my property is.
The applicant would be willing to sit down with the gentleman and go through where his map, where his property is in relation to it.
If you can get with Mr. Curly before you leave tonight, so that he can get your name, and he will help you locate where, where your property is relative to this proposal.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'll...
Chairman Horstman, if I may, I just wanted to add something to my presentation. This entire area actually does fall within our planning area, according to the Maricopa Association of Governments. This entire area is within our planning area. There's an error in our general plan, and our general plan does not show this in our planning area. Just wanted to make that correction.
So this is, this is in part going to be a correction as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Great. It's always good to...
Always good to be correct.
Always good to correct, three or four years later.
Okay. If there are no further comments or interest in speaking, I will close the public hearing on this case, to resume on the 29th of November. Okay, our next case is case 06-700-0001, 207th Avenue and Pecos, general plan amendment. It's a public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the city of Goodyear to facilitate future zoning and development of approximately 2,554 acres, generally located at the southwest corner of 207th Avenue and Pecos Road, extending approximately one mile to the west of 207th Avenue alignment from Pecos Road to Riggs Road in the Rainbow Valley area. The applicant is Earl Curly and Lagarde on behalf of McCray Holdings. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I'd like to draw your attention to the vicinity map, which shows the location of the proposed 2,500-acre general plan amendment area. And on this map, the subject area is highlighted in black, and is bounded by Pecos Road to the north, 207th Avenue to the east, a halfway point between Riggs Road and Chandler Heights Road to the south, and then a large area, Bureau of Land Management property to the west. This general plan amendment area is made up of mostly vacant properties, and located to the north is Bureau of Land Management property. Located to the east is last year's Rainbow, is last year's Rainbow Ranch general plan amendment area. Also located to the east is state trust land. The Perryville and Acateo general plan amendment, which in this area here is owned by McCray Holdings, more state trust land, and to the south, Bureau of Land Management property. This next exhibit shows the current and proposed land uses for the 207th and Pecos general plan amendment area. First request is to expand the city of Goodyear's municipal planning area by approximately 2,500 acres to an area that is currently within the municipal planning boundary, or planning area of the Ton of Buckeye, and Community Development Director Harvey Kraus will hopefully discuss the issues that the city is currently having with the Ton of Buckeye and how those issues will be resolved. And the second request is to designate 2,090 acres as rural residential property. 316 acres is low-density residential, and this entire area here, that's highlighted right, is owned by McCray Holdings. So again, 316 acres as low-density residential, 75 acres as low-medium-density residential, 58 acres as medium-density residential, and 15 acres as community commercial. And the Gray Holdings, the applicant of this request, can I just mention owns 464 acres of this area? And we may now move on to the proposed circulation plan. The circulation plan only shows the 464 acres owned by McCray Holdings, and it's basically an extension of Jermaine Road going west, and this is a minor arterial. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Mr. Lox.
David, on the current and proposed map, there's a little sliver on Jermaine Road that doesn't, that doesn't appear to be part, do you know what that little sliver is?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Lox, that's an excellent question. This area actually will fall within the proposed general plan amendment area, however, it is not owned or controlled by McCray Holdings. It's owned by a different property owner. I believe the applicant could provide more information regarding that.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Askew.
David, from the very first time that you had just kind of filled us in on this, I wrote a note to myself, Buckeye issues. Have we come to any better conclusion with Buckeye?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Housbar, I'd like to defer that question to Community Development Director Harvey Kraus. He has been in some meetings. He has been involved with some meetings with the Ton of Buckeye, Mr. Bushfield, here at Community Development Director.
We haven't come to any final conclusion yet. I guess that's the, the short answer. No, we haven't.
Other questions of staff? Okay, anything further, David?
I can finish my presentation. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, my name is Mike Curly, my address is 3101 North Central. Again, just to sort of highlight a couple of the points, the same discussion that engaged in the last general plan hearing is applicable here. We are just, we own 464 acres, when we had sat and met with staff originally, again, for all the same rationale that I explained in the last meeting. Staff felt that if we were going to be able to negotiate something with Buckeye, and we're going to take this property, and it made sense to include this full 2,500 acres. Essentially, the 2,500 acres, as I understand it, is the private property that is located to the west of the, to the east of the BLM land. I believe that this, that the acreage is, is all privately owned. Again, we're not interested in affecting anybody's property rights, but that was the sort of the direction we were given for the reasons I've given beforehand about including the larger parcels for land planning, planning purposes. As you've surmised, the twist on this application is that the property is technically within Buckeye's planning area, although logically, for a number of reasons, we feel, I think many who reviewed this, this property believe that it probably is more appropriately located in Goodyear. And I say that for a couple of reasons. Number one, as staff has indicated, and you look at this map, we're right adjacent to Rainbow Ranch. This is existing Goodyear city limits in this area here where my pen is, this is the other building property. And, but more importantly, from an infrastructure standpoint, the bottom line is, is that there's virtually no way that Goodyear can, that Buckeye can ever really adequately, in the foreseeable future, and when I say foreseeable future, I mean for decades, to be able to adequately service this property in this area from an infrastructure standpoint. The closest sewer treatment plant that Buckeye has planned for the foreseeable future is 12 to 13 miles away. It also has to, it has to cross over the Gila Reservation. Correspondingly, there are, there are planned sewer treatment plants that are in much closer proximity, about two to three miles away from this site ultimately. And as you, as you can see through this, through the existing Rainbow Ranch, ultimately, that has developed sewer will be placed through there. So I think that many of the people that we've met with, even in Buckeye, in the Buckeye Planning, or I don't want to say Plan Department, and I don't want to name names, but there, I think that from a logical standpoint, this, from planning, from planning purpose, we think ought to belong to Goodyear. Having said that, we recognize that this is a very temperamental issue, that if Goodyear decides that no, this is going to stay, this area's going to stay within Buckeye's planning area, then we're going to have to pack our bags, and somehow, we're going to have to try to deal with this property in Buckeye, so. But we had to get, we had to get this general plan in the queue if there was any chance for this area to be sort of negotiated between the two cities. So as Harvey's indicated, I've not been a part of any of these discussions, but suffice it to say, there have been ongoing discussions, not only with this property, but a whole bunch of macro issues that involve both cities. And it's our hope that at some point, this property could be part of an overall compromise that might exist between a number of issues that confront two cities. And so my, my expectation is that this, this plan or this proposal may not be moving forward with the alacrity that we'd like in the upcoming months, that it may have to be postponed or continued until some of those discussions between the cities take place. But again, for general plan purposes, we had to get this in the queue because of the once-a-year requirement for general plans. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions to Mr. Curly?
I'm sorry, did you, I, maybe I missed it, did you answer regarding that at all?
You know, Ms. Osborne, I frankly don't know. I think it's, it's an Al parcel, we don't own it, but I don't know the status of it, but I'll find out at the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else for Mr. Curly? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Okay. This gentleman, then, will go right back.
I represent...
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Harry Valentine, 101 East Grizzle Road, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020, representing First Baptist Harry Valentine, 101 East Grizzle Road, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020, representing First Baptist Church of Sunny Slope, which has willed two lots out in this area probably 50 years ago. And I spent two days trying to find them and never could find them. So maybe I can see someone over here and they can point me in the right direction. I ended up on a cattle ranch out here somewhere and then a mining road, and that was ended. I couldn't even get into it. So anyway, this is our property or we hold title to it, the church says. And I would appreciate finding out where it is, and it may not be worth nothing in my lifetime, but maybe in the future.
I understand.
And I'd like to be able to present it before my church. And we'd be glad to sell it, but I, I don't think they're doing that at this time.
Okay. Mr. Curly.
Let me give you our address at the church.
Sure.
First Baptist Church of Sunny Slope, 10202, North Cave Creek Road, Phoenix, Arizona, 85020, which the name has changed now. It's North Mountain Baptist Church.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Rapuano, 5612 North 19th Place, Phoenix, Arizona. And I happen to own two of the parcels, which is in Rainbow Valley Ranch Two, which is, I don't know how I put this up here. It's in this subdivision here. And I just wanted to go on the record and support this major general plan amendment in this case for future development. I believe that this is the best way for us to receive any type of utilities in the future. Buckeye's just too far away, and you know, I'm going to go on the record with them and support Goodyear as well, or not.
We appreciate your comments and being here. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Heather Quintero, 6401 East Thomas Road, Suite 106, Scottsdale, Arizona, 85251. I'm speaking on behalf of the three parcels that we own, about 153 and change of acreage within this particular area that Mr. McRae is referencing. We have equitable title to this property. We don't have legal title. So unfortunately, we didn't receive any notices or have any communications with them. And not that we're opposed to this general plan amendment, because as developers, the sooner we receive services, the sooner we can go vertical. But my curiosity has to do with the ordinance number 84-06, and it was passed and adopted by the mayor and town council of Buckeye on the 17th of October regarding the annexing of a significant portion of those parcels, and we're included in that. And I was wondering how that's going to affect things, because that final vote goes on Friday.
Sir, I actually meant to, I meant to address that. We have been after, for about the past month and a half to two months from Buckeye, aware that there was an annexation in the process. It was an enormous annexation. The original annexation, as I understand it, included the 2,500 acres. We objected to the annexation, and were told orally repeatedly by the Town of Buckeye that the private properties had been excluded from the annexation, and we repeatedly asked for documentation to verify that. We had to go through a public records request. We finally got it literally yesterday. My understanding is that of the 2,500 acres, and take this with a grain of salt, but of the 2,500 acres, roughly 2,200 acres, give or take, was excluded, but roughly 200 acres, again, my math is a little fuzzy here, but a small portion of the 2,500 acres was in fact annexed. Why it was annexed and not left out with the 2,500 acres, I can't explain, but I actually had, I had a discussion with Buzz Slaven, who's an attorney, who was representing one of the property owners, who confirmed to me that he was annexed into Buckeye. So we're going to have to go back and do some, do some research to pare down the 2,500 acre request to 2,300 acres or whatever is not jurisdictionally within Buckeye's jurisdiction. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know where your property lies in relation to that.
That's his attorney.
Okay. I just spoke, I just spoke to him today. He said that he wouldn't pay the bill, so he wouldn't come out here. I'm not kidding. He did say that. Lox is a very good friend of mine.
So does the, does the council have any comment on how this is going to affect us? Because we know that we're in that. Our seller did sign that petition, so I know that we're in.
Sign the petition to be included in that annexation?
Yes, so.
I would, I would suspect that you need to confer with your council.
Outstanding. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Olney in Hollywood, 20751, West Chandler Heights Road. And I am in this area. I really do not want to be in the Goodyear planning area, because I like my rural life. That's why I moved out there. And do they know that every second Monday, the quarry sets off an explosion, the dynamite or whatever, and you can feel it at my house, which is probably four miles away? It shakes the whole house. And right behind wherever, I think they are, right behind a dairy out there where their property is.
Really well aware of the dairy.
And they're very close to the quarry, too.
Two, two points of clarification. Thank you for the information. And as we indicated earlier, being included in the Goodyear planning area does not impact your zoning, what you do. And if it comes to annexation, there will be a whole nother process that you may want to participate in if it comes to that. Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carmen Lyles. I live at 2222 Fourth South Tudhale. I am the nut that lives out there without electricity. I've been there for 28 years. Nut because I don't have air conditioning, I don't have general power. The point I'm asking right now is Buckeye did not notify me, and they, they have my address. I mean, I'm on the records, I'm everywhere. So if I did get annexed without my permission, without my knowledge even, and I'm on the corner of Butterfly, which is just south of Alcatillo, on what is 207. They call it Tudhale because my address is Tudhale, but it's actually, according to the maps, 207, which is neither here nor there. My question is, isn't there legally they have to notify us that are there, that we are going to be annexed in?
Yes.
So something's wrong if I got annexed in, if I'm one of the ones that did get in. I didn't sign anything, I didn't go to any meetings, I was not notified of any meetings.
I would say that you.
And I do live there, so it isn't a case of not living in the area.
I, I can't really speak to what the Town of Buckeye is doing.
Could he tell me which ones did get annexed in by any chance? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Foyad Musa and 963 North Dustin Lane in Chandler, Arizona, 85226. We own property in this planning area, and we believe we are in support of the plan that's being presented here. We think it's a good plan for us as landowners. What my question here was, we received a letter from a group called UEG that suggested that the city of Buckeye is annexing this property. And so we were sitting here in a commission in the city of Goodyear talking about planning, and you can imagine, we were a little confused. I personally, when I saw the map, there was an article in the Arizona Republic a few months ago where Buckeye said they want to annex 108 square miles or something. And I called them, and they assured me that no private property was going to be part of that annexation plan. That's all BLM's property. If anybody here in this meeting has a map to show what 200 or 300 acres, we sure appreciate it, because I'm wondering if it's part of our property. My brother is here, by the way, same.
Thank you. Get a card for Mr. Curly, and Mr. Curly will, he's the fountain of information tomorrow. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Going once?
Mr. Chairman. I would strongly recommend all the property owners that have spoken up and are concerned with either being in Buckeye's planning area or being annexed in Buckeye's planning area is to make the trek out to Buckeye Town Hall, go see the director of planning and find, you know, know what your property ID is, and then find out whether they have properly notified you and done all the due diligence that they're supposed to do, and if they have annexed it. You know, Buckeye is a new and growing entity, and they may not have followed all the correct procedures. So I would strongly suggest that it's your, it's your property, it's your obligation to go out there and talk to that city or that town.
When they told me that our property was not being annexed, it made a lot of sense, because there's a lot of no where to be in this property in Buckeye.
Well, that's, that's what we've got under discussion with the Town of Buckeye and the city of Goodyear, is to try to resolve some of these issues along the west side, the east side of the BLM land and state land. We're working on it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, and we're going to take a very brief break, and we'll come back for the last two cases.
Do you guys need this anymore?
Like to call the commission back to order?
Sure, you can have it. Yeah, just take it. I got, we got plenty. You're welcome.
Our next case is case 06-700-0004, Madeira General Plan Amendment. A public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the city of Goodyear to facilitate future zoning and development on approximately 2,363 acres of land generally located between Chandler Heights Road on the north and Patterson Road on the south, from one-half mile east of Rainbow Valley Road, 179th Avenue alignment on the west, east to one-fourth mile west of the 155th Avenue alignment in the east. The applicant is Dustin Jones of Snell &amp; Wilmer on behalf of Airead Incorporated. Mr. Crager.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, I've taken this project over from Ms. Craver, so that's why I'm up here this evening. But this is a general plan amendment for 2,363 acres for Madeira, and as you just spoke, Mr. Chairman, this is a project where we're looking at right now compared to the A portion of the property is already within the city and is zoned agricultural urban. The other portions are within the county and zoned rural 43 and rural 190. The subject property is predominantly in agricultural use. The surrounding areas also predominantly in agricultural use or undeveloped. Existing land uses are rural residential and open space. And this is the Madeira project right here. Open space areas are designated by the waterman Wash there. With most of the property being rural residential, doing a rough calculation on densities, calculating a density at the target, which is one dwelling unit per five acres, we're looking at about 472 units. If we calc on the max, which is two dwelling units per acre, we're looking at about 4,700 The purpose of this general plan amendment, those facilitate future development of the property by providing a more intense and dense mix of land uses. As you can see at this exhibit, the project is requesting rural residential, low-density residential, low-medium-density residential, medium-high-density residential, community commercial, public, quasi-public, and open space land uses along with a village center overlay. Again, calculating densities for the residential land uses minimum, we're looking at about 4,600 units to a little over 9,000 at the high end of the range. Calculating density at more of the midpoint, as you saw within the project narrative, applicant is proposing about 7,000 units at this time. General plan contains criteria for evaluating amendments with those criteria provided in the staff report and within the project narrative. At this time, however, staff has not provided a full analysis of the amendment, and additional work is required on this general plan amendment. As such, we're not providing a recommendation or requiring action at this time. With that, Mr. Chairman, that would conclude my presentation. Staff's available for questions, and the applicant has requested time for a short PowerPoint presentation as well.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Steve, you said all of this, all of the land is within the Goodyear planning area. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, and part of the land is already incorporated in, within the city boundaries. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
There is property within the city, yes, and then there's property that is outside, which is kind of this area here. It goes up to about there.
Okay. And that little indentation on the west side, who owns that? Just, you know, south of McGray? No, leave it exactly where it was?
I was going to go to maybe a better map for you.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, the ranchettes.
Is this property right in there? Yes.
That's just owned by other people that don't, that don't want to participate in this, is that correct at this point in time?
I might ask Athlin to expand if they're not wanting to participate at this time. They might be able to answer that question better.
Thank you. We'll save that for the applicant.
Any other questions of staff?
Planning Commission, members of commission, Dustin Jones with Snell &amp; Wilmer here on behalf of Airead, the developer of this project. I'm also accompanied this evening with, by Karen Keith, as well as other representatives of Airead. Appreciate your time this evening. I know it's getting late. I have a few slides. Many of the slides staff has already incorporated in the presentation that they gave us tonight, so I'm going to try to go through these quickly. I'm assuming that this is the clicker. What's that? What's underneath? Okay, very good. Maybe? There we go. To give you a little bit of background on this, on this project, the project that staff has indicated is not, most of the project is not within the municipal boundaries of the city. We have, are working on an annexation application. We actually have had one hearing already. The other hearing will be coming up in the next few weeks. We've sent letters to all the property owners in the general vicinity of the property. There are some property owners, and some of those that you've indicated are noted outside there, will be part of our annexation application because we can't create a county island. And we've sent letters to those individuals. We've had a neighborhood meeting with those individuals as well. I believe we sent out over 100 letters and had about 20 or so people show up at the meeting. We haven't received great opposition to the annexational application. Many of the property owners that we've had communications with own the property, many of the properties aren't living out there, they have it as investments, and are actually looking forward to the development coming to this area, those that we've had communication with. We do not have, as you see in our general, general plan application, much planning for those properties. We need to bring them in because of the annexation application, because we can't create the county island, but we're not really planning much of their property. As you can see, the site is rather triangular. We provided a map here to give you a little bit of context. When Karen and I began working on this case a couple of years ago, this was at the end of the, of the train station, train stops. It was at the end of the road, but as you can see by this map here that we've included in our application, which is the proposed Sonoran Valley application, we're at the very top of that now and not no longer part of, part of the, the end development of the city of Goodyear. We've joked amongst ourselves that we're now an infill site. We'll get to that case in just a few minutes. As you can see by our plans, our, my client has really been working on a application that is really a master plan community, as those of us who participated in the land general plan amendment. There wasn't much planned for this area, which was why it was just a zero-to-two designation. There weren't any planned parks, there weren't any planned commercial areas, it was just low, very low-density rural residential proposed for the site. With the work that Airead has been involved in over the past few years, they're planning a master plan community, and at the heart of the community is a village core, where you see the commercial that's laid out with a graduation of densities around the commercial, and then the lower densities are on the periphery of the master plan community. Working with architects, working with planners, coming up with a plan, we have some very creative ideas for a variety of densities and different types of housing products that will be unique to the city of Goodyear on this site. This matrix here provides you with a general analysis of what we are proposing in terms of the acreages that would be utilized, the number of residential units that would be part of the application, roughly 7,000, 7,000 acres, or 7,000 units. We have some slides we want to show you that we've been working through, through our groups to come up with a vision for this site, for this project. Entry Monument would be on the north, which would be the end of the Australia Mountain Ranch development, Senape's property on the north side. We've come up with some concepts for entry. My clicker's not working too well. There we go. Entry Monument, as you come into the site, again, coming from the north is our primary The village core is laid out there. As you can see, we've, we've placed our village core adjacent to the recreation, recreational corridor and drainage challenge, channel on that, on that western side of the property. You can see that most of the commercial will be integrated with that site. I think it's an excellent opportunity to combine some uses, mixed uses, residential and some of the quasi-public uses for this site. I don't know what that is on the screen.
Yeah, Eddie, somebody's trying to hack into us.
I want the site. Here's some of the other renderings, illustrations that we put together as we've been, again, putting together a master plan community. The idea is not just to create a community that's just residential, we actually create something that would stand alone. Again, at the time, planning that we were at the very bottom of the city and not more of an infill site. Providing opportunities for open space, parks and trails. We are in the process of putting together a PAD zoning application. We're in the beginning stages of that. We've had conversations, have met with the school districts. Our PAD application, we'd like to have submitted the early part, early quarter of 2007, so that will be coming forward and reviewed by staff. You can see as we put together parks and trails throughout the site, much work has been going into this, and Karen Keith in our office has been working on this very closely with the planning firm. This is really slow, Eddie.
Let me know when you want it to go there.
Keep going. That's the end of it. If there's any other questions, I can answer this this time.
I guess the, the, my biggest concern is, what's your plan for the dairy?
Larry, do you want to speak to that? I have Larry Tzizik, vice president with Airead, he can address that.
Chairman, commission members, Larry Tzizik, 15051 North Kirland Boulevard in Scottsdale, Arizona. Our plan is to, as soon as we begin construction on the site, to do demolition and closure of the dairy per ADQ guidelines. So the dairy will leave the plan.
That's, that, that, that sounds good to me. Coexisting homes and dairies sometimes have a problem or two.
Dustin, talk to us about the ranchettes and the vacant land there. I think I asked that previously to staff, and they, it's right up on the, on the overhead
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, the ranchettes are there, they're not part of our application, as I said, with respect to our master planning of the community. They'll be brought into the city pursuant to our annexation. As you can see, the blue on the side, on the west and on the east is city property. We, going around the site, can't create the county island, so we will be annexing those properties into the city. I believe, I don't know, I think staff has had some communication with some of those individuals as well. We've sent out the letters, not wanting to plan their properties and put too many land use designations on their site. We haven't incorporated them much into our general plan application, but again, we have to annex them into the site, into the city.
I want to ask a question of staff. Harvey, this becomes a majority of the assessed value and the number of parcel votes to come in, so these people are just taken in with, with this process, is that correct?
Yeah, there's two tests for meeting the annexation requirements. Yes, they have to, the council still is, even if the two tests are met, it's still discretionary on the part of the council. The council doesn't have to take them in, the council is, it's an ordinance.
Well, okay, the, the council, so you're saying that the council could create a county island if they?
Oh, I, no, I didn't say.
I'm sorry.
No, the state law does not allow us to create a county island, so that is why.
So if council approves this, they're coming in?
Yes.
Thank you.
This meaning, Commissioner, the, the annexation application?
That's, that's what I asked. Yeah, if council approves the annexation of your property into the city limits, then these people are coming in with you.
Other questions of Mr. Jones? Of staff? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case?
Yes, Robert McCray, 6826 South, South 17th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. I'm one of the landowners in this island that you're talking about. And right now, there's no opposition currently to the plan, but we would like more information.
You have sufficient information, Harvey?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Further discussion or questions? If not, I'll close the public hearing, which will be continued on the 29th of November at Star Point in Australia Mountain Ranch. Our last case is case 06-700-0008, Sonoran Valley General Plan Amendment, a public hearing to consider a request for a major amendment to the general plan of the city of Goodyear to facilitate the zoning and development of portions of an area encompassing approximately 95 square miles south of the city's extended, existing southern planning area, extending the city's municipal planning boundary, south of Patterson Road, approximately four miles, two, approximately four miles south of State Route 238, and generally following the Sonoran Desert National Monument boundary on the west and AmeriCopa Canal County boundary on the east. The applicant is the city of Goodyear. Mr. Burningham?
Thank you, Chairman Horsman, members of the commission. Eddie, could I have you load the PowerPoint presentation? Please.
Your original engagement, or you want the first?
The first one. Chairman Horsman, members of the commission, staff is prepared to show you the presentation of the slides that we showed you in, at the Mobile Elementary School last week. There are a lot of people here, and so we wanted to make sure that the new faces can see the exhibits and get some additional background information.
Briefly, just to introduce this case, as has been mentioned, for this particular case, we will have had three Planning and Zoning Commission public hearings. We had a meeting last week at the Mobile Elementary School. We are meeting tonight. There will be the final Planning Commission meeting, or the third Planning Commission meeting, November 29th, at the Star Point Resort in Australia Mountain Ranch. And then the city council will consider this general plan amendment at the December 11th meeting that will be held at the justice facility. Again, to, to note, the, the general plan amendment would propose to expand Goodyear's planning area. This is not an annexation at this time. Wanted to note that Montage Holdings will be requesting annexation of their properties in the near future and separately advising any private property owners or any landowners in the property. And we included some question and answer handouts out in, in front of the door. There was a stack of handouts of questions and answers that were conveyed at, at one of the original meetings. You're welcome, anyone is welcome to grab one of those if, when they run out, or if they do run out, we can get, we can get more of those. So specific questions about any of the properties, we, we have representatives from Montage, we have representatives from the city who would, who would love to stay after and talk to individuals about specific questions about properties. And again, if, if anyone would like to fill out a comment card there, welcome to do so. This, this first exhibit is showing the context of, of the area that we're talking about, and I'm going to, for the benefit of the audience, I'm going to use my laser pointer over here, and I'm going to show you, you can see the city of Goodyear is shown in yellow here. And just to provide some context, the town of Buckeye's planning boundary is shown with a dotted green line here. You can see Goodyear's planning, municipal planning area is shown with a purple line, so currently, this is its southern extent. The city of Avondale has a dotted blue line here. And so the application that we're talking about this evening is... And so the application that we're talking about this evening is outlined with a heavy black line. Other, other landmarks, you can see Highway 238, I'm sorry, I'm wiggling too much, but this is Highway 238 there. You can see Maricopa right here, you can see Mobile right in this location. Um, to provide some background, as many of you know, Elliott Homes assembled about 10,000 acres for a master plan development in the Mobile area, and Montage purchased about 700 acres. And then, um, as of September 12th, 2006, Montage acquired all of the Elliott Homes property. So how did Goodyear get involved with this process? Elliott and Montage were working with Maricopa County on a land use plan, and the, the city and the developers began talking about future service needs, and, and talk led to the possibility of, of being, um, included into Goodyear's planning area so that it could be built to city standards. And, um, the developers decided to be included in Goodyear's planning area, and this is resulted in a city-initiated, uh, major general plan amendment. So what has transpired since then? Uh, the developers communicated with the county that they would continue to work with the city, they would continue to plan with the city. The, um, county supervisor invited the city to the Mobile area, to the Mobile Elementary School. There was a, a meeting that the city hosted, about 120 individuals showed up, and the city tried to explain the GPA process, the general plan amendment process, and to answer any questions on the general plan amendment on Goodyear's planning boundary extension, and also questions on annexation. And the packet of questions and answers that I had, uh, mentioned previously included all those answers. Information was sent out, and all of this information can be found on Goodyear's website. A lot of people have asked, why would Goodyear want to do something like this? It's a lar, a very large area, and it's very far away from Goodyear's developed properties and municipal limits. Um, one of the reasons is to ensure quality development to Goodyear's south. Goodyear and Goodyear's development community has a lot of development, a lot of, um, investment has been made into Goodyear's southern area, um, Estraya Mountain Ranch, um, a lot of other developments, and Goodyear wants to be able to protect them and, and make sure that future development would protect that investment. Also to eliminate the, essentially, the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac problem that we have in the southern area of the city, to provide a roadway south out of Goodyear. Also to provide for and, um, to provide for a corridor for the future 303 freeway, which would have a possible connection to Interstate 8. And, and last but not least, to maintain open space for public use and migratory paths for wildlife. Wanted to show you how this would impact, um, Goodyear's, um, general plan and planning area. Currently, the planning area is 135 square miles. The Sonoran Valley is 95 square miles. So Goodyear's planning area would increase to 230 square miles. Goodyear's current build-out population is 38,000. Um, this, this, um, application would, would give Goodyear the, um, potential to have a build-out out of 582,000. This type of an application will have, um, a lot of different impacts on the City of Goodyear, and, um, Goodyear has, Goodyear's policy is that growth must pay for itself, growth must help to pay for the impact that it's going to have on the existing residents and, and on the existing levels of service that the city provides. And this will be accomplished through impact fees and through developer agreements. Some items to note, a regional road is needed to the south. There needs to be a road to connect to these future developments, to link Goodyear to these future developments, and this will have to take place through a public-private partnership. And, as you'll see when we look at the, the land use plan, the Mobile area was designed with a village concept. To show you an exhibit of, of ownership, this, this map shows, all of the areas in green are federal land, all of the areas shown in gray are private land, and all the areas in blue are owned by the state land. This next exhibit just shows you acres and percentages of ownership, so you can see that the BLM owns about 52% of the area. State land owns over 5,000 acres. This is the, the land use plan that was sent out with a 60-day review period. You can see the area to the, the north, um, northwest, um, most of that is state land, and Montage owns 10,000 acres in the southern area. And we will zoom in on the, on both of these areas. This slide just provides a breakdown, you can see that, um, a variety of different land uses, you can see, just, just note the amount of open space that's being provided or proposed with this application. Quickly, some key transportation components. I've already mentioned that a regional road is needed, um, a, a southern connection, um, and, and this can be done through Rainbow Valley Road Extension, which will link to the Mobile area. Also, the proposed Loop 303 will extend through this area, and potentially to Interstate 8. State Route 238, when development occurs in this area, would, uh, need to be widened. And also, um, parallel to 238 is the Union Pacific Railroad, so there's opportunities with, associated with the railroad. This slide just focuses in, zooms in on the state land use area. And, and again, just wanted to show you that there's, there's a variety of different land uses, residential, uh, land uses are shown in yellow, the medium and medium-high density residential, uh, properties are shown in orange and browns, and, um, the red areas are commercial. But you can see there's a variety of different uses. In terms of public facilities and, um, utility providers, um, the City of Goodyear is, is interesting, interested in servicing this area. All the local roadways would be constructed by the developers, the, the regional roadways, however, would need to be developed through a, a public-private partnership. Moving on to the area in which Montage owns 10,000 acres, again, a variety of different housing densities, a variety of different, uh, residential, employment, uh, commercial uses. Just to provide, just to provide you with, with a reference, 238 is here. Um, the, the landfill out there is here, the Luthanza, uh, facility is there. Continue on with the public facilities and future utility providers. Again, the City of Goodyear, ultimately, um, the goal is to serve this, this, um, this property as well, and this is an opportunity for the city to look at different methods of providing these public services. And many of these, many of these are going to have to take place through partnerships. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. We also have representatives from Montage who can be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have one. Fred, could you go back to the map where you had, showed the land use planning in the, the northern section of the, of the project?
Sure, I'll take the long way.
That's fine. There. Um, that land, is, is that part of the Montage Holdings, or is that state land that were, that basically has been planned as a result of this whole process?
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, um, it's been whispered to me that Montage owns about 10% of the property, but the majority of the, the area is owned by the state land.
And then could you, um, can we zoom out so that we see both, both, uh, northern and the southern, right there? Okay. The area between the northern development and the landfill and everything else to the south, um, who owns that, who controls that? If, how would we prevent a quote-unquote, you know, county island, or a island of the city being created? You know, well, yeah, how do we, if we're gonna annex, how's that gonna take place?
I'll defer the first part of this question to the, uh, representative with Montage.
Yes, my name is Garth Wiegert, representing Montage Holdings, 6720 North Scottsdale Road, Suite 335. Uh, and I'd really like the opportunity to introduce myself, the company and our partners in this, uh, in this property ownership. There's a long history of land use and proposals in this area, and, uh, my hat is off to you, and I thank each of you for being here tonight, thinking ahead and planning and protecting the surrounding property owners. That, that property that is shown in light green is BLM property, and that would be annexed into, or become a part of the planning area first, and then annexed into, uh, the, the city and be provided as an open space corridor. There's a lot that goes on in that corridor with wildlife, and we hope that we can work together with the city to leave, uh, major corridors open for wildlife.
Okay, so, so the way I understand it is that you would control, um, your properties and the BLM, the BLM would consent to being annexed in so that we would have a contiguous, um, piece of property?
That is correct.
And not a peninsula and then an island, but separate?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and BLM has bought off on that already?
Yeah, they, uh, they are, um, it's statute that they become part of a city with, uh, informational updates. They don't oppose and they don't favor, but they become a part of cities on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up to that, uh, I believe I've heard, whether it was the other night when we were down in Mobile, that, uh, the, uh, Waste Management landfill is not desirous of, uh, being annexed, um, sort of creating an island, which we can't do. How might that work? Because that would mean somehow contiguous to other entities, other, other stuff would have to be not annexed in order to accomplish that.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, I think there's a little more explanation that's due, but let me start by saying that, that because we're talking about the general plan and not the annexation, um, this is where the forward-thinking in terms of land use is important, regardless of how the ownership works out. However, uh, we have had not only the city meetings that have been presented tonight, but we've been at it for a long time with the owners in the area, and we feel very comfortable that, uh, we're going to have a majority of the ownership, uh, coming on board. There are those owners who would prefer not to be a part. One is Mr. Weinberger, uh, who's here that has a landfill adjacent to waste management, and I don't think it's yet determined, or at least we can't represent, uh, where waste management is in their discussions with staff. That's something that I think, um, that staff might better address. But there are ample ways, we have alternatives for each of the major issues, when it does get to annexation, to provide access and options to the majority of people. We already have 60, actually just under 100, uh, property owners who have indicated, uh, that they would be a part of the annexation, and we, we believe it'll be a significant benefit in protecting land values, land use. One of the properties that we acquired was a 690-acre property that's currently zoned, approved, and is permitted for another landfill. And it's the northeasternally 690 acres, which, um, my partner, Joe Porter, would be happy to speak about, but we felt it just the wrong use for a, an area that has been blighted in the county for too long. There's been a super collider, prisons, and all sorts of different uses, uh, anticipated for this, this property. This property was meant to be a community, it's very, very unique, it's surrounded by beautiful vistas of mountains. We have a long history here, Joe Porter was the planner for Estraya. We understand the transportation corridors, and we understand what needs to be done, working with the city, to carry the weight to support this area, and we're looking forward to work with the city to do that.
Thank you. Any further questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, thank you. The, uh, opportunity now for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case, yes, in the back.
Mike DeRozier, 16825 West Yima Road. Uh, the bloat allotment is what you're referring to as the state and federal ground around you. The state ground is 22,000 acres, and the federal is 290. I do not know of anyone that has mentioned, uh, anything about fence removal, or repair, or anything towards the development, if it will be maintained, and that is my question.
Maintenance and, and fences?
Yes, there's perimeter fences and internal fences, and that's my question.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, there, there are two elements to this. One is fences relative to the BLM and state land, and, um, we don't have access to that land, and there are grazing leases, I think, that apply to some of that land, and we can't interrupt that. But we, we are working on a global scale with, uh, the BLM for major plans and connections to the Sonoran Mountain Monument. And again, Joe Porter has been with, uh, two or three different, or at two or three different meetings with both consultants, uh, and representatives for the BLM to create access and openness. As it relates to the development itself and the property that, that we own, over time, as that land is developed, uh, we will remove all fencing and create an open and bustling community in that area. As early as 2008, we have a, a PAD ready to go on the first 690 acres, which we'd be happy to show as an example of the detailed land use, I think some of you may have been exposed to previously.
Thank you. Follow-up, Bush?
I need your table.
I'm sorry. Come up.
No, I'm sorry. And you're, the range con in that area is Beth Lambert. I don't know who you're referring to, who you're in connection with, but I would like to get their names because I am the bloat allotment.
Good, good. No, that's great.
So that's who you're incorporating, and it's started for years, anyway.
Yeah, no, there, there will be no interruption to anything that the land is being used for today. As I said, we're just working with them on a plan to preserve land use adjacent to the Sonoran Mountain, uh, Monument for the vistas and the views, and reducing density as we get to those borders for the ultimate...
My question is just, is who are you, who are you in contact with, so I can get on the same level? That's all.
If, if we can, we'll get a card to you, we'll communicate.
Absolutely.
That would be great. I'd enjoy that. Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Jones?
Eddie, if I can have our presentation as well. Dustin Jones, on behalf of Waste Management of Arizona. Members of the commission appreciate your opportunity, uh, the opportunity which we have to speak. Uh, we have participated in a few of the meetings that have gone on with respect to the proposed general plan amendment for this area. We've had a number of meetings with the city, with staff, and, and multiple meetings, actually, with the developer, Montage, who is proposing the master plan community. What we wanted to do this evening is really just introduce ourselves to you, introduce Waste Management's operations, and what they do down in this area, and how long they've been there. With me tonight, I have Vince Murphy, who is the Director of Operations, he oversees 19 of the operations, uh, for Waste Management, and can answer any specific questions about the operation. But we want to show you a few slides about, and describe a bit of what we do down this area. This slide here illustrates the general footprint of the landfill operations right now. I should, I should clarify that the north piece that's outlined, there's a little square, can I, is there a mouse on this, too? Or a pointer? Very good. The very, very top here, on this piece, this is not part of Waste Management's... The very, very top here, on this piece, this is not part of Waste Management's landfill. This is another landfill, the Rainbow Valley landfill, that's down in this area. But what this slide here shows you is kind of a general footprint of our, of our operations to date, which is here, and then we kind of move up, and I've got some other slides that I'll show you in just a few minutes. This here, again, puts us in context of where we're located within the larger proposed major general plan amendment. And then zooming in a little closer, you can see our site there as well. At last week's meeting at the elementary school, this was, this site, the landfill site, was just to the north of the site of the school. Many of the neighbors and many of the commissioners commented, or asked questions, was that your landfill just to the north? And I indicated, yes, did you see it? Many of y'all indicated, yes, we saw it. Want to give you a little bit of information about our operations. Operations for Waste Management have been going on down there since 1991. It is the largest landfill in state Arizona in both capacity and intake. It brings in about six to seven thousand tons of solid waste a day. It serves Phoenix, and southeast Maricopa County, Tucson, Payson. Many of the transfer stations that are located throughout the valley, the refuse is collected there, and then it's taken down to this site. You may be aware of a, of a transfer station that's on Perryville Road near I-10. That's one of Waste Management's facilities there. The land, the trucks that go out into the community, go out into Goodyear, collect the, the waste there. It's compiled at the transfer station into large trucks, and the large trucks go on their way, many of them on their way down to this landfill site down in Mobile. It's important to note that the permitted height, there is a use permit, I'll get to it in a second, the permitted height for this facility is 250 feet above grade. That is a very large, visible object in the middle of the area down there. You cannot miss it. I, I know that we've heard many comments about it. Nineteen percent of the waste, based on the, on the calculations we've received, nineteen percent of the waste that's collected in Arizona goes to this facility. This facility has tremendous value to waste management, and we believe for the region. And it has a fifty to seventy-five year life on the site as we begin planning. Just to give you some more information about our operations, again, between 300 and 500 trucks go to this site a day. Many of them, again, coming from the various transfer stations that are located around the valley and around the state. Other vehicles, individuals like you and myself, and people that live in the area, who want to take your, your waste to the site, you can go out there as well. That's one of the permitted uses and end. And as growth continues and people begin to move into the area, individuals will continue to go and use, use the facility just as well as Waste Management. They're, they're currently at.
Hold you, hold you, hold you, hold you questions until his presentation is done.
One of the comments raised is access to the site, and this slide here shows the general location of the site on, to the north of State Route 238. What we can show you here is that trucks entering the site currently access the site and come down 238, and then arrive at, up 91st Avenue to that eastern side of the site. This is a route that currently is very, very important to us. That's where the, the entrance is, that's where the trucks arrive. As you see the, the proposed land use plan before you, that 91st Avenue is outlined on the site, but I believe it has some commercial uses there. Our current operations would dictate that those two, 300 to 500 trucks a day would continue to use this route to access the site. There is a rail line that runs along State Route 238. There is, at times, solid waste that arrives on those rails, that comes down here, and then it is unloaded and trucked up to the landfill. It's permitted use of the site. So there is no current rail spur that runs from State Route 238 up to the site, but again, the waste is unloaded and offloaded onto trucks at State Route 238. Some of the facility procedures we wanted to illustrate for you as well, we took, had a photographer go out to the site and take pictures, so you can get a general idea of what's going on out there. Very large trucks, lots of waste being moved around on the site, compacted. This procedure that's outlined in this slide is repeated all day long, trucks coming in, unloading, the compacting, the moving around, until, again, the site which is permitted to 250 feet is reached. Some of the considerations we'd like the commission to, to think about as you plan, and think of a proposed master plan community, is odor, dust, litter, noise, the general things that would happen on a site like this, a large landfill. Waste Management goes to very great lengths to mitigate its impact on the community. And as we move forward with the proposed application, and as we welcome the development into the, into the neighborhood, we want to be good neighbors as well. And part of our obligation is to let those coming into the neighborhood know what our uses are. And that's the purpose of us being here tonight, as you look at the, at a proposal. In a perfect world, for Waste Management, this would be the buffering we would like. You can see our site there, it's outlined there. We had our consultant put this together. It shows our site, and then shows lots of general industrial uses all around us. In other words, we'd rather not have the growth encroaching on the site. But we realize that growth is something that occurs, and we want, again, wanting to be good neighbors to our new neighbors, potential new neighbors, have come up with a few recommendations that we'd like the commission to consider. And we've put these on the records through communications to staff in, in a letter format. And one of those principles would be to not to have any residential uses around our buffer, around our, our property. We don't think that having residential adjacent to the landfill is a compatible land use for a landfill. We'd also would like the commission to consider a half-mile buffer, half-mile distance away from the site, with no resident, no residential, but having general commercial and light industrial types of uses there. Very limited, limited commercial would be our preference. The thought of potentially having a restaurant, or a outdoor diner or something within a half-mile of our landfill is really not what we would consider as compatible land use. We'd like the commission to consider that as well. Again, trying to have proper land use and buffering this very important site for Waste Management. We'd also, as the applicant would come forward after having a general plan amendment approved, when they come forth with a zoning application, we would respectfully request that the, that the city include a stipulation that you find often in the protecting of, of the Air Force Base, a stipulation that require notification to all the neighbors, anyone buying into the community, that the landfill is there, and that your property, your ownership is subject to potential noise and dust and odors as a result of the landfill being located there. So we would, we would respectfully request that as well. I should note again, also, that the site is regulated, fully regulated, fully permitted to be there. It has a use permit that's been given by Maricopa County. It's a fifty-year use permit. The site also has to comply with ADEQ regulations with respect to the environment. There are quite a bit of oversight. Waste Management is in compliance with all of that oversight. Again, we respectfully request that you take into consideration our suggestions with respect to land use. If I could also, one item we did not note on here, is that there is property that Waste Management currently owns that's to the southeast. You can see it on this map that I have on my screen, just down to the southeast, it's kind of kitty-corner to the site. This is owned by Waste Management. Although the landfill is not operating on that site, it is owned by Waste Management. We have trucks and things out there on that site. It is part of our property, property and part of our holdings. One of the things that we noticed with the proposed land use map, it does not take into consideration that that's our ownership, that actually the proposed land use has residential and has commercial and other uses proposed on that site. Again, we have asked staff through correspondence and through communication that that be changed on the land use map as well, and that our property, Waste Management's property, be designated as general commercial, a dark purple around that as well. This, again, is our perfect world, it's not requesting all of that, that buffering, and understand that things will change. But with respect to that 260 acres, this is the southeast corner that's held by Waste Management, we'd request that, that property be designated as general commercial. So these are our comments. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity to place them on the public record.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jones?
I do.
Ms. Asper.
First of all, if I could get a copy of your PowerPoint, I'd appreciate that. Secondly, I was curious, of other, you said that Waste Management had around seventeen sites or nineteen sites in the state. What is the closest residential to any of the other sites?
Vince, I'll turn that question over to Vince Murphy, who's Director of Operations. He can answer that.
Good evening. Vince Murphy with Waste Management, 1580 East Elwood, Phoenix, Arizona. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the, we have a construction debris landfill in North Phoenix, located at the 101 and 7th Street, and we have houses right across the street.
But that's construction, so regular trash, what would that, where would that closest? You can tell me later.
The, well, as far as municipal solid waste landfills, well, Butterfield, for example, the closest residence, although it's not.
I don't want to count that one. I want to count one that's up and running that has residences already located around it. Where would the closest one be, where would the closest residence be to already?
I, I would have to say on the order of about a quarter-mile to a half-mile.
Quarter mile to a half mile, okay.
Any further questions of folks from Waste, Waste Management? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case? Okay. Going once, going twice?
Expectations. I'm ET Westaluski, I have property out there. ET Westaluski, 464 West Sherry Lynn, Phoenix, 85013-4312. As far as good neighbors are concerned, I know they're permitted to operate there. Toxic waste dump has been closed. However, I seem to believe that they have accepted some toxic waste. The New Orleans situation with Katrina and all has caused some problems there as far as oil waste mixed with sand and soil and whatnot. And I intercepted a train one night out there, loading trucks to go to the Butterfield.
I'm, I'm not sure that that's on topic here tonight.
Okay.
If you've got, if you've got an issue that's regarding regulations and enforcement.
They can operate there, that's fine, but they've got to be good neighbors. They can exceed what they're supposed to bring in from out of state.
Again, those are regulatory issues that we have, we have nothing to do with.
It was all petroleum products. It would have lit, it would have burned. So what happens when this dump turns into a fiery coal mine fire and burns for a century?
I have, I have every, every expectation the fire department's prepared to deal with, and Waste Management's prepared to deal with it. They're regulated by the state and the county.
No fire department can handle a coal fire or a dump fire. I've seen piles of metal coming out of some ancient.
Again, this is not on topic. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one else would like to speak? I would like to make some comments on this application.
Sure.
I've been studying this application for the last month or so that we've had it. And while commissioners, we still have another public hearing, I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to tell you that I am going to oppose this, this, this general plan amendment, the future annexation of this whole area, and I'm going to give you about five reasons why the city of Goodyear should not take this land into it. The first reason is that geographically, from a geographer's point of view, this property is not compact. All the other land uses that we saw tonight, all, I believe, six other annexation and, and general plan amendments, created a more compact, unified area of the city. This, this piece of property extends the city down a significant length of, of area, and creates this, you know, even a longer linear city than we have anticipated. That's, that's my first reason. My second reason is that from an infrastructure point of view and from a transportation point of view, there is no way for the city of Goodyear to get to this property for the next three to five years, other than using a Humvee, an off-road vehicle, going through Phoenix, going through Hilo Bend, you, you can't get there from there. And that any citizens that were to be, were in this area that became part of the city of Goodyear, could never get to the city center unless they wanted to take an hour-and-a-half drive. They could never get to the li, the future library, they couldn't get to any of these other areas. The, the third reason that I'm opposing this is that we are, as a city, we are at the point, we have forty-six thousand people, almost forty-nine thousand, based on the last census, and we are continuing to grow. We have management issues in that we have projects that we are currently working on, and this would divert crucial management time, council time, and city staff time, in addition to police and fire resources that are very near and dear to us. And so that's a third reason. My fourth reason was just talked about by Dustin Jones and the Waste Management people. I really don't think we should be bringing a 250-foot landfill that eventually might become a ski resort if we lived in the cold climate into the city of Goodyear. It's, you know, it is just not a good public policy to bring this into the city. And my fifth reason, and this is probably where I'm going to get most hate and discontent, is when I went to Mobile and I listened to the comments from most of the other landowners, from a socioeconomic point of view, those people do not want to belong to the city of Goodyear. And thus, we went through, the city has gone through the Sarville Gardens episode, where Councilwoman Lenny basically told them to let it burn, and people still didn't want to come into the city when they got no fire protection and no EMT protection. And I just cannot see having these, the people who live down there, who do not value the city services, and do not value the, the ambiance of what we're trying to create in the city of Goodyear, and, and I just don't think this would be a good fit. I think the plan that the, that the developer has brought forth is, is an admirable plan, and I would strongly recommend that they incorporate themselves as a city of Mobile, and build the city of Mobile south of, of the city of Goodyear. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just in closing, very, very quickly, I have some significant concerns as well, some overlap with what Mr. Gelsner said, and there's some additional things that I'm concerned about. I'm not confident that this addition of property is essential to the well-being of the city of Goodyear. I'm not feeling comfortable about what the financial burden may be on existing taxpayers, and how the costs of the development down there, including the regional road. I think it's needed. I don't think there's any question about it. And the 303 and, and Rainbow Valley Road are, are roads that are going to be built eventually. They are going to go to, to I-8, maybe not in my lifetime. But the 303 is certainly the kind of thing that I would put in my mind as candidate for a toll road. The developers have financial backers, and there have been a number of toll roads built in the United States over the last ten years. And the opportunity to have that regional facility as a toll road might be something to be explored. But I don't think necessarily that the city of Goodyear has to be the catalyst for that. We can be a player, but I, I don't think we need to be a, 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 a direct player in that game. And with that, I'll, I'll end my comments. Mr. Porter, did you want to close out the discussion tonight?
My name's Joe Porter, 6720 North Scottsdale Road. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in particular Commissioner Gelsner, thank you very much for your comments. I, I think you raised some questions that... I think you raised some questions that are very important questions that we have talked internally about and we've talked with the city staff about. And as we've been going through this process, we've been asked over and over again, why would you want to annex to Goodyear? And I'm not sure what I'm going to say to you is going to help you feel good about why Goodyear should annex this, but at least talk about that maybe a second. We are bent on developing the next generation of new communities on that site. And I hope, I really look forward, if we get there, to the point that we can show you those plans and show them to you in detail and let you see what we're talking about. But we are talking about, we're talking about a satellite town within the City of Goodyear. And it's time that happened, it's time that happened in this country, and it's time that it happened in this region, that this kind of development take place. We also, because economic development's going to be very important to us, that north-south connection is extremely important, and we feel very strongly that we have a better chance of getting that built faster and better if we are within the City of Goodyear and not in the county trying to work with the city. We have a pre-annexation agreement draft with the city. And in that pre-annexation draft, we commit to fronting that road. We're engineering it right now. We're looking at alignments to take it from Rainbow Valley Road to 238. And we have a draft agreement with the city that we will front in the cost of that, that the city will set up a funding mechanism so that as people benefit from that, that there is an opportunity for us to get reimbursements. And it's going to take that two to three years that you talked about, but that is, when we planned and started the development of Australia, it took two or three years to get across the river and get to Australia. That road, we believe, is equally important to Goodyear and to us. I did the master plan for the keyings for Australia. In fact, the last time I was in front of the city until just a few weeks ago was when we brought that annexation and that zoning to the Planning Commission and to the City Council. At that point in time, that road connection south was a fundamental element of the plan, and it's still a fundamental element of the plan. And it's extremely important to all of the other properties that you're talking about annexing, because right now they're at the end of the cul-de-sac, and if there's not somebody down there working to connect, it's going to take as long as you suggested, Mr. Chairman. Geographically, what you see as a problem, I see as an opportunity, and I've said this to everybody who will listen, it's an opportunity to create a classic European new town, a new town in the classic European tradition, a clustered new town with a center, an urban center, a higher level of densities that are possible within the county, a satellite city or town within the government of Goodyear. Whether it's within Goodyear or not within Goodyear, it should still be that kind of satellite town, surrounded by open space and connected by transit. And that's our goal. We can do it a lot better within Goodyear because Goodyear has the statutory power of a city, and the county doesn't have the statutory powers, and we can do more to create an urban environment and an urban center in Goodyear than we can outside of Goodyear. As people have asked us why we wanted to be in Goodyear, and we've asked, I've asked developer friends in this region what they think about being in Goodyear or in the county, and they say you want to be in the county because it's easier to develop in the county. We're not looking for a situation where it's easier to develop. We're looking for a situation to create better development, and the rigor that takes place with the city staff doesn't bother us at all. That's what we're after, and we need a partner that will balance with us our private sector powers with your public sector powers to create something that hasn't been created in this region yet. Relative to how we're going to do it, and I know that this is, the Planning Commission is a land use board, but if I was sitting in your shoes, I could not address this issue without having some idea of how it's going to be done, okay? And in our mind, how you do it falls into several categories. There's the issue of municipal services. And what we've talked conceptually with Steve Cleveland and his staff is in our first village center having satellite town offices. So during that period of time that you're talking about, there will be City of Goodyear offices in Goodyear, and there'll be City of Goodyear offices in our development. And we, by the way, if we had a road between there, we would still be trying to talk you into doing that because we're going to start with a little village center that has retail on the ground floor and office on the second floor, and we need tenants even if we have to pay the tenants' rent, all right? But that's the kind of place that we're trying to create. So there's the issue of municipal services. There's the issue of sewer and water and basic utilities, which we're committed to pay for and turn over to the city, and the city will then operate them, own them, and operate them or have agents operate them until the city has the staff and the capacity to operate them with city staff, and we've committed to that. I've already talked to you about the road connection that we've committed to. The issue of police and fire and emergency services is a difficult one, but it will work as a transition. And in the beginning, we will do very much with the city, and we've talked to the city staff about this, so this is evolving discussion, but we will do very much with the city, what we would do with the county. We will contract with private services or county services, and we'll start that way, and we will evolve into full-blown city services, and we will cover the cost of those until the tax base is adequate for the city to cover them. And I believe we're talking Wednesday, we have a meeting Wednesday to meet with the staff, to discuss a consultant proposal, to have an outside consultant explore what that phasing should be and what the cost of it will be and actually how to go about it. So we have something very powerful in mind that we want to create. We need the city to do it. You have some annexations today that you were talking about that are very powerful. I think you need us to do those. I think we're in this together, and I think we should be in this together. We started this with the county, and we can return to the county. It's not our preference, all right? Our preference is to do this with the city and do it better. But we, you know, we're not snuckered. It'll take us a little more time. We can return to the county, and we'll probably still work with you on the road, but we won't have the powers to work with you on the road that we would have if we're within the city. So I don't know if this means anything to you, but this is a serious thing to consider. And I can't really speak to the city's capacity to manage now, but that kind of capacity can be built. Building capacity is something cities do, and we know the managers within your city, and if the city's having problems, it's not their fault because they are really good people. They know what they're doing. We have high confidence in them or we wouldn't be doing this. So anyway, I wanted to just share this thing. I guess the thing about the socioeconomics of Mobile and whether people want to be involved or not, we have diagrammed a lot of annexation boundaries, and we can keep people from legally being islands. Now, they still might feel like islands, all right, but we can get the annexation routes to avoid the kind of fully surrounded island that you're talking about. Our goal would be to leave areas down there that are kind of neighborhoods so that there's one area where there are a group of people living, where most of the people live, and that area should remain a rural residential neighborhood, and it should be buffered and it should be protected. We're going to do more than just worry about islands. We're going to be sensitive to those neighborhoods. There are some people down there who definitely don't want to annex. There are a lot of people who do. There are a lot of investors who do. And we will assume the responsibility for working through that and identifying those people and doing the best we can. There will be some people that just because of the land holdings are just going to get annexed against their will. And we're talking to them, and we will talk to them, and we'll do everything that we can to make things right. But there's going to be a change down there, and it's going to be better than any change that's been proposed down there in the last 20 years, all right? And it's going to be better than any change that would be proposed if this land wouldn't have been acquired. I mean, because of the land pattern, the people who moved there went there to homestead that land and had a great dream, but they didn't have soils, and they didn't have water, and they failed. And it's just not a place that can grow economically, and it's not really a place where people can go live alone because if you look at the 10,000 acres down there and the hundreds of owners, there aren't very many people sticking it out on that land. So it's a tough piece of land, and there's an opportunity because of its location between the metropolitan area and the National Monument to bring it into productive use within the region and within Goodyear. So anyway, good points. I'm glad you finally brought them up because I had a pretty good idea that you, some of you were thinking about them, and they're good questions. And, you know, give it some thought. If we can do anything, if we can provide any information or any other insights to let you know how we're going to go about this or to answer any of your questions, we'll do that. I can show you, in fact, it's in the computer, and I don't want to do it now because it's too late, but I can show you the school plan, the plan of the first 670-acre village. And when we started, it had a K-through-eight, K-through-eight school that was going to be the typical K-through-eight, 850 or so students. And the Board of Education down there said that they would like to have smaller classrooms and smaller schools. So now there are two schools in the first phase, K-through-eight, 650-student schools, and we're working with them starting next week to actually program and design the first school. So that's an example of how we're working with that community to respond to their concerns about the kind of school district they would like to have in the future. And we're doing a lot of things like that, and I think the staff knows about them and a lot of people know about them. Unfortunately, you don't know about them because we have to go through the big process before we can go through the little process. But those are things that we're working on and that we want to bring to Mobile, that we're going to bring to Mobile, and I hope we do it with the city, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Last comments? Anyone else want to speak?
I'm a landowner down there, and I support the action. One of the things that I...
Your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Ross Babcock at 1215 East Northern, Phoenix, 85020. Anyway, I own land down there, and I, you know, I hear some of your concerns, and one of them just doesn't resonate very well. These developers are going to build all the infrastructure. Before you take responsibility for it, you'll have a tax base in place, you'll have the facilities, the infrastructure, all of the water sewers, everything in place. All you have to do then is operate it and collect the money. I mean, it's, you know, obviously a cost in operation, but it will actually sustain itself based on the plan that I've understood. And I think that, you know, there's always a startup problem, but that's going to be small, and these guys are honestly planning to make that not an economic burden. If you follow their plan, it'll actually wind up increasing the money that Goodyear has to work with, not decrease it. But anyway, I'm just listening to that concern, and it just doesn't resonate very well with me.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Stroud. I live at 17610 North Larkspur Lane in Surprise, Arizona. We do own property down there. My question is rather elementary. Are you able to annex property that is located within the Snorr Desert National Monument? That's where our property is located. I've got a notice with our parcel number stating that apparently this will affect us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission. To answer the question directly, it is possible, and I think the municipality has the right to annex within it, but I think the staff wisely has chosen not to annex anything in the Snorr Desert Monument. Is that correct? Yeah.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I would, I'd like to clarify my earlier statement. I've run through the six municipal solid waste landfills that we have in the state in my head, and we are probably more on the order of a mile, in most cases more than a mile, to actual residences. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. It will be continued on the 29th of November at the Starpoint Facility at Australia Mountain Ranch, and look forward to seeing you then. Harvey, any staff communication? We're still in session.
Harvey, we can't hear you over here.
We'll be meeting at the restaurant there before the meeting, so we'll touch with you about the time to meet there. We'll have a meeting. We also wish you a happy weekend. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, next week.
There's no further business before the Commission. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I guess the packets are coming on Monday, right?